Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and those of you who are watching from afar, thank you for tuning in. We have a... we'll start the meeting, call it to order, and then Councilman Martin, would you lead us in prayer and invocation?
Absolutely.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we look to you for the greater good and the smaller things in our lives. Lord, we reach out to you tonight. We ask you to keep watch over Israel, protect her, guard her people, treat those that are hardened or wounded, be with her, guide her as she continues through the days and the nights in trying to protect what Israel is known for and means to all of us in our hearts. Lord, I pray for our first responders throughout Brunswick County. More importantly, our first responders here in the town of Oak Island. Watch over them, protect them. You know them individually. Put your hands on them and guide them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. So, we're going to start with the second quasi-judicial public hearing. It's a hearing for a special use permit for a childcare facility in commercial low-density zoning on Midway Road. With that, Brian, I turn it to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you just indicated, this is an application that has been submitted by Ms. Shannon King, Happy Kids Drop in Daycare LLC, seeking a special use permit to construct and operate a childcare facility at the address located at 2827 Midway Road, Suite 108. As a quasi-judicial hearing, we're going to conduct this in a manner somewhat similar to a court proceeding. We follow the rules of evidence. We don't follow them quite as strictly as they would in court. This applicant has the right to a fair and impartial decision-making body. Essentially, what that means is that the board... excuse me, the council must base their votes tonight solely on the competent, relevant, and substantial evidence that's presented during the hearing, not what you may have heard outside of the hearing. And I need to ask the council as a whole a series of questions, as we've done in the past, to ascertain if there's any reason why you could not be fair and impartial tonight. So my first question is, does anyone have a financial interest in the subject matter of this SUP application?
No.
And, Madam Clerk, as usual, if you'll just note all the negative responses.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anyone have a close business or family relationship with the applicant?
No.
No.
Okay. Many of you are probably aware of where this property is located, so that's not my question. My question is, have any of you made a site visit to this site for the purpose of assessing this SUP application?
No.
No.
Has anyone had any conversations outside the context of this hearing with staff members about this application?
No.
Anyone had any conversations, and they're called ex parte conversations, any conversations with the applicant or anyone associated with the applicant concerning the subject matter of this application?
No.
Can any of you think of any reason why you cannot be fair and impartial and base your vote solely on the competent evidence we received during the hearing tonight? Okay. All right. All witnesses who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn in. They will be subject to cross-examination by any person with standing that's in opposition or in favor. They will likewise be subject to questions from the council. The way we will proceed is the applicant will present her case first. She will then be subject to cross-examination, as well as questions from the council, and any other witnesses she intends to call and/or offer any evidence. I'm sorry, did I say staff first? I think I just... Staff will introduce the item first, and then we will hear from the applicant. Sorry. The applicant does have the burden of proof to prove that their evidence meets the criteria found in the agenda packet. Staff's going to be presented by Mr. Brady Golden, who's going to go over that criteria. In order to obtain a SUP or a special use permit, the applicant must receive a majority vote of the council. So, Madam Chair, do you or the council members have any questions of me before we open up this hearing?
Counsel, we good?
All right. Madam Clerk, do you want them to come up to you or just stand up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those who wish to provide testimony in this hearing, please approach Madam Clerk and be sworn in.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
All right. Mr. Golden, on behalf of staff, can you tell us why we're here?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to review a special use permit request for child daycare at 2827 Midway Road, Suite 108. Background on the applicant. Ms. Shannon King has applied for the special use permit to allow a child daycare within the commercial low-density CLD zoning district. The proposed daycare is located at 2827 Midway Road, Suite 108, tax parcel ID 2030001301. The shopping center contains different uses such as grocery stores, gyms, medical and business offices, and different food options. Here, we've got a map of the area. It's on Midway Road and intersection 211. CLD zoning district is surrounded by it, indicated in the middle of the screen with a red circle. This use also has supplemental standards tied to it. We'll go into those. If there is an outdoor play area, it shall be provided on the area, and it's shaded by the building, awning, trees, other methods. Outdoor areas should be designed so that staff is able to see and easily supervise the entire area. Number two, if a special use permit is required, which it is, the permit shall establish the hours of operation. And number three, off-street parking spaces slash loading and unloading areas, one parking space or queuing lane for the loading and unloading of children, for each 10 children based on the childcare center's regulated capacity, with a minimum of four spaces plus one parking space for each employee at maximum staff level. Also, here are the standards for our special use. Town council shall issue a special use permit if it has been evaluated through a quasi-judicial process and determine that, number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved by issuance of the special use permit. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Number three, the use shall not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or that the use in a public necessity. Number four, the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, shall be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity to the land use plan. That's all I have, and I'm opening questions.
Any questions from council?
If I may, I'm going to presume, I'm actually just seeking a confirmation, so the applicant meets all state standards to run daycare, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Can we... you do. Okay. So, safety, medical protocols, et cetera, you are fully compliant. I have a question about... the capacity loading is 10 children, is that correct?
That is what it says in the ordinance. And the applicant can speak to it, because I think there's are some differences in a standard childcare facility and what the applicant has proposed, because I believe she's best to answer those questions.
That's fine. All of my questions for the applicant.
Any other questions of staff?
Question, the adjoining businesses to either side of it, can you tell us what businesses they are?
I'm not aware of what the businesses are, and there's no separation or any standards that would bring that into account.
Any other question?
I'm good with Brady.
Thank you.
And we can always call staff back up if we need to. Ms. King, would you like to ask Mr. Golden any questions?
I think I've asked him all the questions I needed to.
Okay. Well, if there's anything he's answered to you outside of this hearing that you want to be part of this hearing's record...
No.
Okay.
Could you answer the question on what I need to provide?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Well, actually, Mr. Golden, it looks like pages 26 through 32 of the agenda packet pertain to this application.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to offer that in the evidence as Exhibit A?
I would.
All right. Ms. King, do you have any objections to the record being... the agenda packet being part of this record as an exhibit?
Absolutely not.
Madam Mayor, I recommend that the council accept pages 26 through 32 of the agenda packet in the evidence.
33.
Excuse me, 33. 30... Oh, 33 is the... okay. 33 into evidence as Exhibit A without any objections.
So, so be it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. King, would you like to come up and address the council?
While she's coming to the podium, could everyone check your phones, please, and make sure they're off?
Well, Ms. King, to break the ice, hello.
Hi.
I want to just ask you a couple preliminary questions.
Of course.
Just to get the groundwork established, this is off the island.
Yes.
You were... we were asked, Brady, what businesses are next door? Can you tell us what businesses?
I can. On the left side, if you're facing the business, on the left side is the actual Lowe's Food Shopping Center itself, and then on the right is the UPS store.
UPS store?
Yes.
Where is the fitness center?
The fitness center is, if you continue to the right, it is about five or six units down.
Okay. Concerning Section 7.4.1.3 on parking, one parking space for every 10 individuals, what is your rationale and answer to that situation?
Well, we do have access to the parking lot that is put in front of the unit, so there's more than enough parking for everything, as well as employees. There is two employees per shift, so they have access to the very front, and then also the back parking behind the units. So they are good to go.
And Mr. Golden brought up a part about outside activities, but your petition said there will be no outside activities.
Yes, there are no outside play areas or anything, so that doesn't go for this.
Do you have an existing business now?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have an existing business elsewhere now?
I run a social media platform, so not...
But not a daycare?
No, nothing like that.
So, since you're here, and welcome.
Thank you.
You're fully compliant with North Carolina law, correct?
Yes.
Right. So your ratio of staff to student is one to five?
It's a drop-in daycare, so it's not the standard daycare that runs from eight to five with classrooms. Because the drop-in daycare operates with a different standard, there's not a set ratio for like one child or one teacher per five one-year-olds. It's from six... from one year up to 12 years, which allows for a bigger ratio, which would be up to 30 children per two staff members.
Okay. So your capacity's not 10, it's actually potentially 30?
Yes, depending on how the fire marshal rules it, if there's...
Can you just describe the level of staff training that will be in the room?
Of course. According to the state laws for a drop-in daycare, there's technically no requirements for staff training. For my personal business, how I am planning on running it and how I've hired for it so far, everyone needs to be first aid CPR certified for children, and then, as well as bloodborne pathogens, stuff like that. Anything that you generally see in a standard daycare, I do want to implement in my business, but there is not a state requirement for a drop-in daycare.
And just going down that road a little bit further, so is there going to be someone in the room with these children who has first aid training minimally?
Yes, there will always be at least one staff member with first aid training.
Okay. Will there be security cameras?
Yes.
And I assume the door will be locked?
Yes.
Ax code access?
There's not a passcode access. The front door, obviously, parents can come in and out. There is a separate gated area so that the children cannot go through to get to the front door, as well as a back door that they are going to build as soon as a permit is passed to prevent the children from accessing the back door. So that all exits, while they're still open and freely accessed, the children cannot access them.
And if you were to reach on any given day your capacity, 30?
Yes.
How do you plan to pupil account? How will you know where these kids are?
There is one big open area. The staff members are always with the children. The head count is always kept, both visually and on record. If we hit capacity, then unfortunately, with the drop-in situation, the parents that call or try to bring in their children, they would be turned away. It's just not possible.
Just out of curiosity, your business model, this is a four-hour drop-in?
Yes. Drop-in daycare is children can come every day that you are open, per state regulations, for a maximum of four hours.
Right. So if I were a working parent, this wouldn't necessarily help me if I had a full-time...
It could help, because just the fact that normal childcare centers, if you look anywhere in the area, most of them do have a waitlist, most of them. Speaking from personal experience, when I moved to the area, it took us approximately three months before we could find somewhere for our children. It does help take some of the burden off if parents have opposite swift shifts, swinging shifts. That is four hours that you more than likely will have somebody to watch, and then if the other parent, a babysitter, anyone else like that that is approved can come pick them up. It does help, as well as possibly in the future, after-school care, before-school care for the parents that need that. It's just not the standard. You have to pay me hundreds of dollars every single week, no matter if your child's there or not. It's as needed.
And your anticipated clientele is age one to 12, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
One other question, if I may, ma'am?
Of course.
We're asking you a lot of questions about safety and regulations. I'm sure something as important as a daycare is monitored and inspected by the state on a regular basis, is that...
A standard daycare, yes. A drop-in daycare, you are... you submit the application, you submit all the details about it, but they do not come and inspect a drop-in daycare. No. It's technically an unlicensed childcare center. You just have to have approval on your certifications.
Carrie?
Thank you. I did hear you say that you were compliant with all the state regulations, so is it safe to assume that that includes the required background checks for your employees who are going to be around these children?
The state actually does not require... the state doesn't require much of anything for a drop-in daycare, and I know that. Whenever I realized that, I was like, oh, my gosh. I personally conducted background checks for everyone that I hired, though.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Is that a state background check or something?
The SDI, yes.
Excuse me, just a couple of questions, and they'll be brief. You mentioned security cameras. Will parents have access?
No. They can access it if they have questions, they can come in, and I'll be happy to show them. But for the safety of everyone involved, I'm not giving free access over Wi-Fi, anything like that. They can come in and see whatever they need to see, but it's not to leave the room unless external circumstances.
Can parents make reservations?
Yes.
The location of the next closest drop-in daycare, if any, to your location?
It's in Leland, North Carolina.
In where?
Leland.
Oh, Leland.
Yes. So it is a good 30, 35 minutes away, I believe, and then the next closest would be in actual Wilmington.
So with the wide disparity of ages, you've got one-year-olds who are taking naps and they're in cribs, and like, how do you... how are you going to balance that with two people?
How do you balance that?
Yeah.
From my experience, before I decided to open a drop-in daycare, I actually did work at a drop-in daycare for a while outside of... in Wilmington, I worked at Simply Play. I don't know if y'all ever heard of that, because I have experience in both standard and then drop-in, and I really did fall in love with the drop-in model, because it was just... it was a lot of fun for the kids, and it was fun to actually help the parents that didn't... they didn't have the money to pay for, gosh, over $1,000 a month. Every drop-in daycare that I have seen and I've worked in, they have their rooms set up where there's little stations, you could say, and more of the older kid's stuff is set on one side, more of the younger kid's stuff is set on the other side, and they naturally will gravitate towards the things they're interested in, and then, as well as the staff members kind of help corral, I guess, especially the younger ones. But they are together, there is enough space for all of them following the standards. They're going to interact, which honestly is a wonderful thing. It can seem hectic at times, especially when you have more children. If anyone's been around a room, honestly, with more than four children in it, it's going to be hectic. But the younger children love learning from the older children. The older children really do love interacting with the younger children, and when there are issues, that's a case-by-case basis that you can handle with the child and the parent themselves.
Well, it sounds like something the community could use, since the next closest one is in Leland.
Yes.
So congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
In your business.
Awesome.
Mark?
No questions at this time.
Anyone have a second question? Thank you. Do you have a presentation of any kind?
I think we covered basically everything I was going to present in the questions.
Yeah, we jumped right out of the gate with questions.
We sure did. Honestly, that helped me out, because it took the pressure off, so that's fine.
So you're not interested in showing your presentation, which is fine, I'll leave it to you.
No, it was just... I had a few models, but honestly, Brady showed a lot of it, the lot, the parking, everything like that. Brady showed an overview of what it looks like. I don't see much of a... I don't think me handing you guys the... you can have the papers if you want, but I don't think presenting the papers with the same exact information again will do anything but take up more time for the meeting, and I'm sure you guys have other things to get to, but that's basically it.
Thank you very much, and I also wish you the best of luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Well, I just want to make sure no one else signed up?
No, no one else signed up for this one.
Didn't see anyone else get sworn in. Is anyone else out in the audience wish to speak? A motion would be in order now, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
Motion to close the hearing?
Take it. All in favor? Is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion, we accept.
Motion to approve.
The SUP?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Excellent and unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do we want to take a five-minute break?
It's up to you, Mayor.
Let's take a five-minute break to allow Mr. Richardson and his client to...
And just so, we talked about this briefly, but Wilmington's got a traffic issue with the Cape Fear Bridge coming out of Wilmington. Everything's flowing to the Isabel Home Bridge, and I personally was stuck down there for at least 40 minutes today. Mr. Richardson was letting me know he was in a similar situation and gave me notice that he would be here as close to six as possible. That's why we inverted the two hearings.
Do you want... just to take a few minutes to get oriented?
So are we in recess, Mayor, or...
We're in recess for five minutes. We are back from break.
Mayor, thank you. This next item is a reconvening of a continued hearing on a special use permit application. The applicant is Mr. Gun... he tried to help me 10 times before we... Gunthel Gandhi, for a special use permit to construct and operate a hotel at the property located at 1425 East Beach Drive. I realize we went through this when we initially opened this hearing a few months ago, but I'll just go through it quickly again. The applicants are entitled to a fair and impartial decision-making body, which means the vote must be based on the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence presented during tonight's hearing. To that end, I need to ask these same questions as I did for the last hearing. Does anyone on the board have a financial interest in the subject matter of this SUP application?
No.
No.
Does anyone on the board have a close business or familiar relationship with the applicant for this application?
No.
Has anyone had any discussions about this application outside of the context of this hearing with town staff?
No.
Or members of the public? Or with the applicant, or someone acting on behalf of the applicant?
No.
All right. Has anyone made a site visit to 1425 East Beach Drive for the purpose of assessing this application?
No.
Can any of you think of any reason why you can't be fair and impartial this evening and base your vote solely on the competent, substantial material evidence presented during the hearing?
No.
All right. All witnesses who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn, and they will be subject to cross-examination by other parties, if there are any here. They will also be subject to questions from the council. We will proceed with... well, I guess we're past the point of staff introducing the items, so I would recommend we go ahead and allow the applicant to resume the presentation of their evidence. Madam?
Before we do that, I would like to just remind everyone in the room that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and there are subjects such as or topics such as this one which can be contentious. I ask that everyone be on your best behavior, and please watch your tone. Tone of one's voice alone can be inflammatory, so if you try to moderate that, I'd appreciate it. I don't like to gavel anyone, but I will if civility isn't maintained, so thank you for that.
All right. Where we are exhibit-wise is Exhibit A was tendered, which was the agenda packet in the very first hearing. Last month, the hearing did not... the reconvening of the hearing did not occur, but Mr. Richardson submitted what I believe he's going to mark as Exhibit B, and consented to town council having that and to examine that prior to tonight's hearing. Mr. Richardson, state that accurately. Okay. The applicant does have the burden of proof to bring forth competent evidence that they meet the criteria found in the agenda packet. Does anyone have any questions of me, Madam Chair or Council?
I do not.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a question, Mr. Eads. When the planning director presented this, there were some questions that he suggested were better made to the applicant. We didn't get that far before things were recessed. My question is, is if we have continuing questions for staff tonight, do we need to have Mr. Golden and Mr. Edwards sworn in since they were not... they were not sworn in for the initial hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Anyone who wishes to provide testimony must be sworn in.
Okay.
And it's within the providence of the council to call them to testify.
Thank you.
Any questions of me before we proceed?
No.
All right. Ms. Stites, can you tell me how many people signed up?
There are three people on the list.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, you and I talked about this briefly earlier today. When we left off last month, the question was whether people would be allowed to sign up at the resumption of this hearing. I have done some research, I cannot find anything that would prohibit that, or that otherwise require them to sign up on the evening. I realize in a prior SUP hearing, we did have that agreement, that no one would be allowed to sign up when that hearing was resumed. I believe the difference in that hearing, though, the applicant had concluded all of its evidence, and we were continuing that hearing to allow those who did sign up to So having said that, madam mayor, I believe that anyone who signed up tonight should be entitled to speak. And I can read our section of, from our Code of Ordinances regarding standing, the way, and I will read it, just so we're clear on it. This is from Section 4.11.1.2 of our Town Code of Ordinances. The applicant, the town of Oak Island, and any person who would have standing to appeal the decision shall the right to participate as a party at the mandatory hearing. Now, by party, it means they get to cross-examine. But the next sentence reads, "Other witnesses may present competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive as allowed by the board or as allowed by the council." There are some certain areas where lay testimony, according to our ordinance and the law, should not be allowed, and I'll read that verbatim. The term competent evidence, as used in this subsection, shall not be deemed to include the opinion testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following. The use of property in a particular way would affect the value of other property, the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety, and matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under the rules of evidence." So, and that comes from Section 4.11.1.3.1.2 and .3. That's straight out of our town code. Mr. Richardson, do you have anything that you would like to address based on what I just said?
So I guess for the record, thank you, Mr. Eads, madam mayor, members of council, Grady Richardson, on behalf of the applicant, good evening. I want to apologize for being a few minutes late. I left my office at 4:20, which means I should have been here just before 5:15 at the latest. I actually got on the Parkway almost to the Isabel Holmes Bridge, and it was two lanes all the way backed up to the airport exit. I did a U-turn all the way down to Market Street, all the way on I-140 to get here by 6:10, so I apologize, I was in contact with Mr. Eads on that. I think for purposes of the record, not to pick off a scab, just hear me out on this for purposes of the record and preserving my client's rights. This original application was submitted in December, and the applicant appeared for the hearing, submitted the application materials. A decision was not made that night, it was continued by council to January. January had inclement weather, January 2021, inclement weather, so that got canceled or continued over to February. February hearing, applicant appeared, there were deficiencies noted by Mr. Kirkland, staff of the town. I was not retained at that point, watched the video, and because of that, the matter was continued over to March. I then was retained, as you know, and was seeking desperately to get a continuance of the March hearing due to a trial that started for me on March 18th, and the first phase of it ended today, and the second phase ends tomorrow, but that's been in Pender County. Without having the certainty of a continuance and not knowing what to do, because my clients and his architect are out of town, as am I in Wilmington, we decided to scramble together and put together the supplement that's been identified and moved into the record as Exhibit B. That supplement was designed to address many concerns, A, the readability of it, being on eleven by seventeen, given a rendering of the project rather than a black-and-white, one-dimensional view, but giving some schematic drawings, and also addressing staff's deficiency notes from the February meeting. As you know, when we got here, I had moved, or I had withdrawn the motion to continue, given the uncertainty and just the fact that we had gone ahead and prepared and moved forward. At neither the December 2020 meeting, the January, well, that one, the February meeting or the March meeting, did anyone sign up to speak in opposition to my client's application. At the March meeting, over my objection, council decided to unilaterally make a motion to continue it until tonight, and we were prepared to go forward that night, and we don't think that the motion to continue it to tonight was appropriate. However, on the record, it was done for a variety of reasons that the record will speak to, but as I understand it, only one person has signed up tonight to possibly speak regarding the application, and if he does show up and decides to speak, it will be met with my objection on the basis that the record did close on one of the three prior meetings for anyone to speak in opposition to it, and as well as the procedural objection that I do have to having continued the March meeting. So with that said, obviously, Mr. Kirkland is not here, but I have had communications with Mr. Golden, and my understanding is Mr. Golden, in concert with presumably other staff, including Mr. Kirkland, reviewed the supplement and found, and I quote from yesterday's email from Mr. Golden to my...
I'm sorry, Mr. Richardson, I don't want you to have to do this twice, but I don't think technically we've opened the hearing yet, and the witnesses have been sworn in.
Gotcha, all right, you're right.
And that way you would have to do it twice, so I would ask all those who wish to provide testimony to approach Madam Clerk and be sworn in.
And I don't need to as officer of court. So, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Golden, Mr. Gandhi?
Lisa, no one from the public signed up?
There's one gentleman who did, but he didn't come forward. Mr. Stewart? Okay.
We can proceed.
And, Mr. Richardson, just as a matter of housekeeping, Exhibit B was tendered last month, and the hearing was not open, so would you like to tender Exhibit B now to officially come into evidence?
Yes.
Okay, and then just to your comments earlier, and the minutes will speak to themselves. I believe at one point, the applicant last month was amenable to a continuance if there was an agreement that no future people could sign up. If my memory is incorrect on that, then I'm sure the minutes will reflect that.
You're correct.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that, since you went through the recitation, I think in fairness to the town, that is noted for tonight's record as well. So having said that, go ahead, sir.
And that was not accepted, so then we reverted back to wanting to proceed forward. Okay, so, do you have another microphone in case I call someone up here that they're speaking?
I personally do not, but I'll ask. He's working on it, so we'll make do for now, and problematic, we can wait till he brings it up.
So I would go ahead and call Mr. Golden to try and move this along. Mr. Golden and I can share the microphone. Good evening, Mr. Golden.
Good evening.
Will you state your name for the record?
Brady Golden.
And what is your position with the town?
The town planner one.
Did you review the applicant's supplement and original application materials in advance of tonight?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and the previous concerns noted by staff dealt with landscaping, lighting, and the facade, is that correct?
Correct.
And does the supplement address the landscaping, lighting, and facade concerns?
It, so it addresses facade considerations for our review of the UDO, that we did have additional comments for landscaping and lighting.
Okay, and were those concerns for landscaping and lighting previously communicated, or were these new notes that you and your department made since the February meeting?
The applicant was made aware of the entirety of our development standards. These secondary comments were made in more detail to specifically address what was lacking.
And my understanding is you attached, I believe, yesterday by email to me and Mr. Eads, as well as my client, a supplemental memorandum from March 22, 2024?
Yes.
And the lead-in to that email was that based on the latest supplementation to the special-use permit application, the attached PDF, which is your memorandum, contains comments addressing landscaping and lighting. Please note that these standards can be conditioned with approval, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and is this a true and correct copy of your supplemental memorandum of March 22, 2024?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Eads and council, I would mark this as Exhibit C, and would move to, move it into the record, and would like to hand out a copy for everyone.
Mr. Golden, since you just authenticated that that was indeed your email, I assume you don't have any objections to that coming into evidence?
I do not.
Madam mayor, I recommend we accept Exhibit C into evidence without objection from staff.
Thank you.
Other than the two items noted in your memorandum, Mr. Golden, has the applicant satisfied everything else under the town's UDO for a special-use permit application?
Yes.
And just again, the landscaping and lighting concerns in this one-page supplemental memorandum are things that the council can pass upon as conditions to approval, is that correct?
Correct.
And is it your understanding that those conditions would be binding on the applicant if the special-use permit is approved?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay.
I'd next like to call Mr. Murphy, Tom Murphy. Good evening, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening.
Will you state your name for the record?
Frank Thomas Murphy.
And what company are you with?
I'm with Olive Architecture in Raleigh.
And are you the architect for the applicant in the special-use permit application?
I am, yes.
Okay. In advance of today and throughout the application efforts since December of 2020, did you have the occasion to review the town's unified development ordinance?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Did you have the occasion to review the town's land use plan?
Yes.
Okay, does the application, in your expert opinion, well, first of all, why don't you set this up, just give a snapshot of your qualifications and experience in architecture and dealing with special-use permits?
I was originally licensed in 1983, so I've been at this for quite a while, and in that time, a niche that I've experienced, I guess, that I have is hotels. I've done over 250 various types, different brands and flags and such. I'm very familiar with different ordinances and city requirements, and so I've done projects all along the coast here in various jurisdictions, so I'm very familiar with it, have gone through UDOs in other jurisdictions as well, cities and small townships and such. So had, to the best of my knowledge, went through and reviewed all the items that are typically have concerned, all the categories, and again, to the best of my knowledge, I thought I'd covered everything.
Have your qualifications and experience ever been called into question by a judge or other tribunal?
No.
Have your qualifications and experiences in the architectural field pertaining to special-use permits ever been rejected by a municipality in a quasi-judicial setting?
Rejected, no.
And so reviewing the town's UDO and land use plan, Mr. Murphy, as of tonight, with the original application, the supplement from March of this year, and the supplemental memorandum by Mr. Golden that we just talked about, does the application satisfy the town's special-use permit application requirements?
It does, obviously, the additional two comments that he had provided yesterday. Do have responses to those.
Okay, so with respect to the two comments by Mr. Golden, can you just elaborate on how the applicant has addressed the landscaping and lighting notes in the Exhibit C memorandum?
The two comments, one obviously addresses landscaping and the second is lighting. Landscaping, previously discussions were of a buffer to adjacent properties, and there was no comment or concern to the street frontage, and looking at other properties all along the roadway there, there were no particular other locations that were addressing adding trees and landscaping to the frontages, so I'd missed that one unfortunately. But in a supplement to that, I could provide, we did address the street frontage, which is for every fifty feet, having two shade trees and six small shrubs, which we, I can show you, we have included on both sides. There's a ninety-foot frontage to the roadway on, facing the property to the left of the roadway, and there's about a forty-two-foot frontage to the right of that. So in doing that, we added three shade trees to the left side, twelve shrubs, and the other side, two shade trees and six shrubs. The landscape, or the, I'm sorry, the second comment was lighting. What we had missed, what I had missed, I guess, is the twenty-foot, is the twenty-foot maximum height of the fixtures on the building structure itself. Typically, on a structure like this, obviously, you would, the oceanfront view or the ocean side of the building has decks, so we did have a fixture on the decks, and so those have now been eliminated, because rather than just have one on the lower level, we didn't want to have them on that side at all, so those were taken out. There are fixtures that are at twenty feet and above in the front, which is the walkways going to the rooms, but they're out of view of the oceanfront. They do have that for security of, actually, the code requires a certain illumination on walkways and exit paths, so we have that minimal coverage on that, allowing for those structures. Now, I've gotten with a lighting company, and all the fixtures that we're proposing are all turtle-friendly, friendly, rather, which have amber lights, they're all LED, but they have an amber lens that meets a certain wavelength, which is, was compatible with turtle-friendly. So all the fixtures are proposing, including the pole lamps, which are eighteen-foot parking lot lights, are all amber lights, they're all turtle-friendly, and they all have the ability to be dampered in barn door control of light dispersion, dispersion, rather. So I believe we've addressed both of those comments.
Have you come tonight with materials that address both the Mr. Golden's and staff's landscaping and lighting concerns in the Exhibit C memorandum?
I do, I have copies for everyone. There are four sheets that are affected on the Exhibit B that you have. On the elevations, the light fixtures were removed from the back of the property, there are some notations as to which fixtures are at what location. Then the landscaping, the two street buffers are shown on this as well, and have the information on there about the types of plants. the information on there about the types of plants and tree. The tree proposed is a bald cypress, which is one of the selected shade trees, and the shrub is a dwarf palmetto, which also is on the tree or the township-approved landscaping.
Could you repeat that last part? I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. The buffer, the street buffers are, there's a shade tree required. It's a bald cypress, which is one of the approved shade trees, and the shrubs that are dispersed between them are a dwarf palmetto, which is also in the shrub, approved shrub category, and seem to be what's used kind of throughout the community as a trying to be in Congress with everyone else.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Eads, I would propose moving in this four-page, 11-by-17 supplement that addresses staff's additional landscaping and lighting matters as Exhibit D.
Mr. Golden, have you seen this?
I have not.
Do you want to take a look, see?
There should be sufficient copies.
I have one question, and that's whether you have any objections. I assume you don't, but... My only question is, do you object to this coming into evidence? Mr. Richardson, did you want this entire packet to be D?
Yes, and there should be copies plenty for counsel and Ms. Stites, as well as yourself.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept drawings that have been marked SD1 through SD13.
So just the four sheets that were changed.
Well, the four sheets, SD1, SD8, SD11, SD13, into evidence as Exhibit D without objection.
No objection here.
So we will receive this as Exhibit D.
Mr. Murphy, now that we have the original application, your supplement from March, staff supplemental memorandum in Exhibit C, and now Exhibit D, do you believe that the application fully complies with all the technical specifications and requirements of the town's UDO for a special use application in this zoning district?
Yes.
And based upon your experience, qualifications, and having reviewed the town's UDO and land use plan, do you believe that the proposed special use application is in harmony with the existing adjacent neighbors and surrounding areas? Do you believe it is also in harmony and in keeping with the zoning district? Are you familiar with the fact that a portion of this property was destroyed by fire?
Yes.
Okay. I understand it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the building that burned down on the site was in 2019, was approximately 10,000 square feet and comprised 20 condominiums and two townhomes, is that correct?
By record, it's 13,100 square feet, yes.
Okay, so it was actually more than 10,000 square feet that burned?
Yes.
And, but nevertheless, the portion that burned was comprised of 20 condominiums and two townhomes, correct? Okay. As part of this application, you are not only rebuilding in a new fashion what burned down, but you're also removing the office buildings and the one unit, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And that comprised a little over 2,100 square feet.
Correct.
So in total, the application takes what was existing as about 15,000 square feet and restoring that plus an additional 5,000 square feet? And so instead of 20 condominiums, two townhomes, an office, and a unit, so a total of 24, what we'll call units, this proposal would add 51 hotel rooms rather than the condominiums and the townhome, the office and the unit?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I have no further questions. Mr. Gandhi? Mr. Gandhi, will you state your full name for the record?
Intal Gandhi.
And Mr. Gandhi, are you one of the principals of the applicant seeking this special use permit?
Yes.
Is it true, sir, that the buildings on the property before the fire consisted of what was called the green building that was built around 1971?
No, the green building is an existing building. This green and yellow exist today.
I understand that, but when was the green building first built?
It was in 1971, yes.
And when was the yellow building built?
1960.
And when was the office and the unit building built?
Shows 1969.
Okay. So the portion that burned down, you're proposing as part of this application to get approval for hotel improvement on that area, plus removing the office in that unit as part of this improvement of the hotel?
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Gandhi, I'm showing you what I'm going to mark as Exhibit D, can you identify what that is a picture of?
Yes, that's the old speaker. Yes, this is an establishment which was burned down.
Okay, that's one picture showing a portion of the hotel that was burned down?
Yes.
Mr. Eads, I would move Exhibit D into the record, and I have copies for everyone.
Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept this picture into evidence as Exhibit E without objection.
So moved.
And Mr. Gandhi, I'm showing you another photograph, what does that appear to be a picture of?
This building burned down, it's an ocean side.
Okay, so this is looking from the ocean at what portion of the property burned down in 2019?
Correct.
And in looking at this, are the two end pieces on this picture the townhomes?
Correct.
And in the middle are the condominiums?
Yes.
Okay. I would identify this as Exhibit F and move that into the record, Mr. Eads.
Brady, you're going to get your exercise tonight. Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept this picture into evidence as Exhibit F without any objections from staff.
So moved.
And Mr. Gandhi, while that Exhibit F picture is being passed around, I'm now showing you another picture. Describe that, if you will, sir.
So what you see is on the right side, you see the condominium, that's a building which was burned down in 2019. The one you see on the left side, that's the green building we were talking about, which was built in 1971.
And is that green building going to remain as is with your special use application?
That's correct.
And is that picture of the green building, does that show it, is that what it presently looks like?
That thing exactly looks like the same thing. I know you can't see much green, but I'm just saying on the left side, the building is its existing building.
Okay, but that's what it looks like present day?
That's correct.
I would move Exhibit...
G.
No, G now?
G.
G into the record.
Accept this picture in evidence as Exhibit G without any objections from staff.
I'm sorry, I need one.
So moved.
And last but not least, Mr. Gandhi, what is this a picture of that I'm showing you now?
It's an ocean's front of the building which burned down.
Okay. Identify this as Exhibit H and move it into the record, Mr. Eads.
No objections. Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept this picture in evidence as Exhibit H without any objections from staff.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Gandhi, I'm now showing you what was previously marked in the March meeting as the supplement, Exhibit B, the 11-by-17, and does that fairly depict an artistic rendering of the hotel you're proposing to build by virtue of the special use permit application from the road, looking at the structure?
That's correct.
And is that a structure that you designed from a personal aesthetic that you would like to see built as the property owner?
That's correct.
And does that structure artistically for you and through your lens, mark, represent an improvement of the prior structure's aesthetics that existed before it was burned down?
Yes, I think so, yes.
And have you put significant amounts of money into the application process, including having Mr. Murphy develop this schematic artistic rendering?
We have put additional financial resources to reach here.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
I'm sorry, can I hear you maybe well?
Yes.
First of all, good evening. He's interrogating so much that I forgot to greet you all. Yes, we have had a lot of financial resources to reach this point. We were hoping to get the permits and then add this to it, but as he asked the question, yes, we have added resources.
Thank you very much.
And on page two of Exhibit B supplement, what does that rendering depict?
It's an ocean front view of the building.
Okay, so this is a rendering looking at it from the ocean towards the structure, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and is that rendering and that design something that you have a personal preference for as the property owner of what it aesthetically would look like?
Yes, it's simple, but still elegant. It's, we try to match up with what we have existing, but definitely it's much more elevated than what we have. Existing buildings are, as you know, it's 50 years old, so yes, this is really good-looking, at least for me.
And it's the Cape Cod gray with the white and the metal roof on top, is that correct?
Yes, I'm not sure about the exact metal roof. Tom will answer that than me, but yes, the color coding, yes.
Okay, and do you believe this rendering, as well as page one, mark a substantial improvement aesthetically to the building that had burned down in 2019?
Yes, for sure.
Mr. Gandhi, when you first hired me, I remember you telling me about the project and about your passion for the project. I would like for you to tell counsel in your design of this building, why it is, what is the purpose behind the design and why you want this hotel built, sir? Speak up in the microphone.
So I met Mr. Waltz, who was the previous owner of this particular site, I think so around 2020, and happened to meet through a common friend. And we talked about, you know, this experience, the building being burned down, and he was definitely devastated. And he told me that, you know, a lot of customer comes in here and they keep asking, why are you not redoing it again? And obviously, he told me that, you know, he was senior, he was 70-plus, and he said he'd rather retire. I don't think, you know, I have in it. But he was saying that the reason customer wants this is because a lot of people who is physically challenged, they have an issue with the existing building, where, you know, there is no elevator there. So they will be confined to the lower rooms, and they won't have much access to oceanfront. And this is the only property in the whole island which give them access to renting for a one night or two night or multiple nights if they needed to be, you know, at an affordable prices, they don't have to book through the whole house and so on. So not only the affordability was the question, but also the access. We get a lot of such requests. And so when I met them, he said that, you know, if I can do it, why don't, you know, let me pass on this torch to you? You have a passion and continue with that. So obviously, this was not even a dream, this is too good to be true for me, I mean, you know? But as I see it, I see a vision here, which can serve not just, just not the resident here, because, you know, a lot of baseball teams, some teams comes here, a lot of groups comes here, the marriages host here, and they want to confine and still stay in their own rooms. And affordability is definitely there. On the top of it, this has to be that boutique. If you go online, you will see is that not all brands, but there is a lot of awards and reputation there for the boutique small hotels, which doesn't have to be branded like Hampton Inn or any other hotels for that. And that's the vision I wanted to give it to this site, that remains small. This is in existence for last more than two decades. I mean, it's 50 years, but Ocean Crest Motel was there for 20 years. And if you see it, it has more than 4.5 per star rating. This is not even on the Google if you see it. So the whole point is, this is that driven by the community, by the small people, you know? And vision further.
And going through the design, is the design one that you heard, I mean, first of all, let's make no mistake, are you in the business of making money?
Economics does work, yes.
Okay. I'm assuming, but you correct me if I'm wrong, that this structure, if allowed to be built, will cost a significant amount of money to build?
Yes.
Now, that being said, does the design and the affordability of the demographics you're trying to have stay at this hotel, does that design play a role into the affordability of families trying to stay and enjoy the beach?
Yes, 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Gandhi. So at this point, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Eads, staff, on behalf of the applicant, we would respectfully request that the application, which meets all of your UDO requirements, satisfies the land use plan, meets the quasi judicial standards, is replacing a building that was antiquated at best, not in keeping with modern day standards, is being replaced by a structure that will be modern, it will be built up to the more stringent codes that exist, it is going to replace the antiquated structure that was there. I think it's noteworthy that not a single homeowner on either side of the property or directly across the street, anybody that would be in the immediate vicinity, has come before you and sought to oppose this project, okay? And I think that's important when you start looking at the squishy aspect of the harmony. It satisfies the technical requirements, it satisfies the carrying of the burden of proof by the applicant for issuance of a special use permit application. And at this point, we would rest our case, we would reserve the right to assert any objections to any person who would speak out against it for the variety of reasons I summarized earlier, but we would ask that you approve the special use permit application. And of course, I am here, as well as Mr. Gandhi and Mr. Murphy, happy to answer any questions that council may have, or staff for that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Madam Mayor and counsel, before we move on to the other gentleman who signed up, are there any questions at this time for Mr. Murphy, Mr. Gandhi, Mr. Golden spoke again, or Mr. Richardson? Not saying you can't ask him later, I'm just... Not saying you can't ask him later, I'm just, before we move on, do you have any questions?
I have a question for Mr. Murphy.
Come on back up, Mr. Murphy. And when you're addressing council, make sure that they can hear you, okay?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Murphy. I was going to ask about turtles. You brought it up first and used the term turtle friendly.
Yes.
And that's a wonderful term.
There's actually a certification for that.
It's vague to me. Lighting on the back, lighting facing the ocean during our turtle season, that's a mortal sin. What precautions will be taken for that?
There, as, as I indicated before, there are no building mounted light fixtures on the ocean side of the building, those were all taken out. There are garage fixtures, and there are pole lights, both of which the specifications are in the packet that was sent to you, actually was in the, the B, Exhibit B as well. There is a certification, there's a wavelength, and amber lighting that's approved in the lighting industry for turtle, and there is a certification for turtle friendly, there's actually a logo for it. These fixtures, we will assure, I've spoken with the manufacturer, that these are, are compatible for this type of environment.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Murphy at this time?
I have a, I have a question for the applicant, I'm not sure who wants to answer it.
Before we let Mr. Murphy go, if I may.
Please.
Can you just clarify, we have a little trouble hearing you at this end of the dais. So the original square footage was 15,000 square feet, that included the condos, the townhouse, and the office? And what you're proposing to build, what, what is the new number?
It's just shy of 20,000, 1980.
So you're plus 4,000, square feet, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My question for, for who, whomever chooses to answer for the applicant, just clarification, the existing green building and the existing yellow building will remain, or they will be torn down, or they will be renovated? What's the, what's the answer on that?
There are three structures on the building, I mean, on the property right now. One is the, the green building and the one yellow building, and one there is an office. Only the office structure, which is around 20, 200 square feet, has been taken down. The yellow and green building will stay as is.
Okay, and how, how many rooms are in each of those structures?
Forty, 42.
Together?
In, yes, yellow and green building put together, 42 will.
Before you leave, could you tell me the, the height of the crest, if you will?
That may be a question for Mr. Murphy.
On the drawing?
And I've got the, I've got the, if it helps, Mr. Murphy, you need to come back up here.
It's, it's the tallest point.
For the record, Mr. Murphy is flipping through Exhibit B supplement, and it's on, he's gonna go to sheet SD seven, maybe?
Yeah, there's, sorry, my eyesight is not good enough on that. It's 50 feet four inches.
55 feet four inches.
The, the tower, there's a structural portion into it, it's, it's 55 feet four inches, and there's a slight peak to that roof, another three feet, so you're at 58 feet.
From the ground?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy right now?
Madam Mayor, I have questions related to that height, but they are for our staff.
Okay.
So I'd like to call the staff up now, since we're on that topic?
It doesn't matter.
I have one more question for Mr. Murphy. So just to clarify, the, the testimony we've heard this evening, in your original presentation, you indicated that you hadn't thought a lot about aesthetics. You were primarily concerned with complying with the UDO. You recall that?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
What we're hearing tonight is that the passion behind this project and the aesthetic considerations were not the architects, but the owners. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I heard Mr. Gandhi to say he designed it out, out of his passion.
Well, we, we've corresponded, obviously, about the design and discussed.
You translated his ideas?
Yes.
Just trying to get the story straight here.
That's, yeah, that's sort of my job, is pulling out the owner's intent and the owner's desires. Yes.
Thank you, okay.
And as a follow-up to that, so was that the case with the first rendition we saw, or the second rendition, or both?
Well, I.
Did Mr. Gandhi have the vision for the first rendition, or did you have the vision, or?
No, if you recall my testimony on that first meeting, it was my misunderstanding, I guess, or the way it's typically done for special use permit, is it's a can do or cannot do type of a approval process. The aesthetics typically do not come into play in this type of meeting, in my experience, I guess, in other locations. It's, it's really a, a special use, whether or not you can do this type of project in this type of zoning district with these density and that type of thing. So at that time, I think I had mentioned there too, that the solution at that time was more of a, a massing study and just kind of the basic design, and then obviously it came across at the meeting that you were looking more at absolute specifics of materials and colors and appearance, and I think I conveyed at that time as well that that was not representative. There were some comment at the time of a Motel 6 and some other comment about the design at the time as well. Again, that was not intended to be the final design, I think I conveyed that at the time. It was more of a massing and square footage and, and height and that type of a consideration. And then I mentioned I would come back with a more formal rendering, which I did at the following meeting. That, that is more reflective, the discussions that I've had with the owner of being more, of the appearance and colors and materials and things that are, are typical for the, I don't want to say typical, but are more, are more used on other properties and, and more of a reflection of Oak Island. And we did our best to try to, to use those type of materials. And at the same time, consider, you've got to realize this, the original property was 1960, or 1969, 61, or 71 that these were built, they could not be built today, the building codes would not allow that. You have 150 mile an hour wind that you have to design for, any appurtenances put on the building have to resist, you know, being attached to, to resist that type of wind force. So it's, it's a much different design, and it's a, and is very, is code compliant, so.
Mr. Murphy, a question if I could. As an architect, have you previously designed a beachfront hotel?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
How many times would you say you, how many hotels, just a ballpark number?
On oceanfront?
Beachfront hotels?
We looked at two properties in Carolina Beach that I worked on. Just two. Done oceanfront homes and apartments and things as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mark, anything?
Not for Mr. Murphy now.
Anyone else? Mr. Murphy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's that? Yeah, Councilmember Carter, would you like to hear from Steve Edwards regarding the height?
If I could ask questions, yes.
Yes, ma'am. And you were sworn in.
Good evening, Steve Edwards.
Yeah, so, Mr. Edwards, at the first meeting, I was able to ask Mr. Kirkland about the different building heights, and I just want to make sure that I understood the information he gave me and clarify it for myself if I'm looking at it incorrectly. So if we look at, for example, on page SD seven of the supplement, it's a building section, and we can see to the top of the parapet, it looks like it's 44 feet, and that is in compliance with the height level for a building in that zone, is that correct?
That, that is correct. Parapet walls are allowed to be three feet above the building height.
And then my question, I think, to Mr. Kirkland was about the additional height of the elevator tower. And I believe at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, he stated that, maybe I should just ask you, how can the elevator tower be higher than the 44-foot?
Well, in the UDO, section 2.15 talks about building heights, and it excludes other mechanical apparatuses for commercial buildings. Elevator is a mechanical apparatus, and because this is a four-story building, you have to have an elevator that will accommodate an ambulance stretcher to get to all floors. And that, and of course, they do have that sunning deck up top, so that's a, another area that they have to have the elevator in access, therefore, the elevator has to go all the way up to the top of the building. And again, 2.15 of the ordinance, the UDO, does allow mechanical apparatuses to exceed the building height, and there is no cap put on that in the ordinance.
So that's, if I heard you right, that's actually a sunning deck on top?
I, that's my assumption, it's, it's a, it's a, it's access for a deck up there.
Could the applicant clarify the use of the top of the roof?
Mr. Gandhi?
And for everybody who's listening in, we're looking at SD five, and it indicates a roof terrace of 2,746 square feet.
So the question, Mr. Gandhi, was what are your development plans for the top of the structure, on what would be, I guess, just above floor number four?
Yeah, it's just the deck, that is, there's nothing else, I mean, it's just the deck there. And we have given two accesses as required by the code, so one would be elevator and one is the stairs, if you see it.
I think the question they're having is, are you planning to have any uses made of that very top exterior floor as a deck?
No, it's just a deck. It's just a, you can say a viewing deck, or sunbathing deck, or.
So there would be some possible use by patrons of the hotel on that top deck?
Yes.
Are you planning to have a, a bar on the roof?
No. We don't have any serving of food or anything as such right now, except some vending machines. We don't have any, any service, we don't sell anything on the site.
So for weddings and celebrations and parties, you would conceivably leave that roof terrace space open for those that are attending?
We haven't, I haven't even thought that far, but it is for patrons, I guess, I mean, they can, right now, it's just, we just put the space, sometimes the beach gets full, or this, somebody wants a privacy up on the deck, they'll do it. I never thought that far, but yes, it is for the patrons to use it. Are we planning to sell something as of now? No, there's no plan as of this time.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, I haven't, then I have a follow-up question for either Mr. Edwards or Mr. Golden. Given that that, Mr. Edwards, given that that roof space potentially is going to be occupied, does a three-foot parapet meet a safety requirement for, for fall protection?
It, it does, because the, on that same sheet, okay, my apologies, you can see the elevations, I'll wait for Mr. Richardson.
And we're looking at SD seven of the Exhibit B supplement.
All right. The top of the structure is at 40 feet four inches, and a guardrail has to be for a commercial application, 42 inches, which keeps him right at that 44 mark that you're seeing there. So he's, he's, he does meet the safety requirements for a guardrail, and he's also still compliant with the building height.
Anyone else on council have questions?
Mr. Edwards? Hi. I just want to cut to the chase. At 41 feet, and then with three feet worth of guardrail, that is in compliance with the town's ordinance.
Correct.
If they have a deck up on top, if they have an elevator that goes up to 58 feet, that is in compliance with the town's ordinance.
Correct.
If they choose in the future to sunbathe on the deck, is that against town ordinance?
Well, no, we, we can't regulate the use up there, other than something to be in violation of a police matter.
When, when we were going through everything, and I heard 58 feet, I kind of thought, hard, that's, that's totally out of what we're trying to accomplish, but according to town ordinance, it is, our UDO says that's acceptable.
Mark, any questions?
I, I believe Councilmember Carter had some additional questions.
Yeah, I wasn't quite finished.
I don't think she was done, so.
I just had, just had one more question.
Okay.
Mr. Edwards, I'm referencing the supplemental document SD one, where it shows a site plan. Just a question for clarification, there's no dimension on here between the new hotel and the existing hotel, so I don't really know what that distance is, but does that meet separation, the, the building code separation requirements?
That would require a plan review, but the building code does address separation, that may have to be a two-hour firewall on that property, but that, that falls under the building code reviews once it gets started.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question for Mr. Richardson, and you may have to concur with your client. I'm assuming by submitting Exhibit B, C, and D, which is renderings, and then comments from the planning, and then the lighting detail, that you're comfortable with those exhibits being conditional to the special use permit?
I'm gonna say yes, but I'm gonna defer to Mr. Gandhi to confirm that. Do you understand the question?
Yes, we do. We're comfortable with that.
Steve, don't sit down. Are you done, Mark?
I am, yeah, thank you.
And John, you've asked questions, right?
I'm done.
Okay. I was just gonna ask you about this document that was handed out, I don't remember which exhibit it was.
Exhibit C, I believe, Mayor.
Thank you.
I can find it for him real fast.
Is that Brady's document you're talking about?
Yes.
Prefer Brady to answer those questions, if that's okay? Is it, unless it's something specific to the building code?
That would be fine, either one. Brady, as it relates to the landscaping, so it says the street yard lacks the requirement for shade trees, that's with our current ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that was referring to the, the initial rendering, not sure what the, the name of that evidence is, but the one that was submitted first, what they have submitted tonight looked as if it did meet the standards. They had updated the plan that showed sufficient shade trees and smaller trees to meet that standard.
So in your estimation, what they have submitted meets our most recent vegetation code?
It does meet the, the standards of, of the performance standards for evaluating this, this project, yes.
But that's not the newly revised Chapter 32, that's the 32 that was in, was the ordinance when the applicant made application.
So the, the landscaping requirements are different in the performance standards. Chapter 32 does not come into play with these types of reviews. There's a, the landscaping section is, is, is isolated in the performance standards. Chapter 32 is totally different.
So can you help me with why this document relative to landscaping and lighting proposes that the lighting and the vegetation can be conditioned? If it's already in compliant, then that wouldn't have to be an additional condition, would it?
No, if, if they show that their most current plans, that, that they are in accordance No, if they show their most current plans that, that they are in accordance to the standards, then there would be no conditioning necessary.
Okay. So they've done that after this was issued on March 22nd?
To my knowledge, yes.
Would that be Exhibit B?
Yes, and even though it was dated March 22nd, Madam Mayor, I don't believe it was actually submitted to the applicants until yesterday. And so Supplement D, Exhibit D, is meant to address what we got yesterday.
Excellent, thank you.
And just to follow up on Councilmember Martin's question, if I may, Mayor, sorry. The applicant, since you submitted it, I presume you will agree to a condition related to construction in accordance with Exhibit D?
Correct.
Thank you.
Does that need to be a condition, or that's just an understanding?
I believe it's an admission by the applicant to be bound to the Supplement D, as well as Exhibits A, B, C.
B, C. A was just the agenda pack, well, okay. Yes, Madam Mayor, if you would like my opinion, yes, I think we need to make any approval, have that, those conditions.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have a further question.
Sure.
Is there a plan for signage, other than what we see on the building? Is there a signage plan?
I don't believe there is, Mr. Gandhi or Mr. Murphy. Is there a signage plan? That doesn't come into play, though, until you have to, you have to have the permit approved before you can then start actually building it and getting building permits and meeting everything else that goes into pulling building permits, including signage. You would have to comply with the signage ordinance provisions of the town's ordinance, which is what we would do.
Absolutely, they would have to comply. I'm just curious whether there's a plan that has been developed at this point.
Not at this point, no, sir.
Is it appropriate to ask the applicant, Mr. Gandhi, about environmental considerations? It's not part of the building itself, but the building is beachfront. And there is a number of considerations relative to being beachfront in terms of care of the dunes, educating the public about what is and isn't allowed on the beach. So I was curious as to those types of plans. Well, I was, it's to you, Mr. Richardson.
I can, I don't know if Mr. Gandhi or Mr. Murphy would be able to say this any better than I would, but clearly, you're in an ocean hazard zone, you're going to have KAMA all over the place, right? Coastal Area Management Act rules, regulations, all of which are going to have to meet KAMA review to get a permit to be able to build anything in that area. And so we can't do that, though, without first having the ability to apply for KAMA permits. And the way we do that is we have to get the approval of the use, and then with that, we're able to go and proceed with KAMA permit review and approval process to ensure that the structure is going to satisfy the Coastal Area Management Act and the North Carolina Administrative Code provisions that pertain to that aspect. I would imagine as well that as the structure is being built, I'm sure the town probably has dune ordinance provisions to keep, prohibit walking on dunes because of their vital nature. And nothing's going to be allowed to go over those dunes or disturb those dunes without staff of the town reviewing that, including your local permitting officer for KAMA for the town, to say that whatever access ways are being proposed, to the extent any new ones even have to be proposed, and I don't, I don't know if they do or not, they would obviously have to get KAMA approval, local permitting officer approval, and town staff approval, and have a building permit authorized to do so.
Understand that part.
So I think the, I think the environmental considerations there are going to be adequately addressed, because you can't even disturb a speck of sand in this area unless KAMA's giving its blessing. And so because of the, I'm going to call it ocean hazard zones, but it could be a number of things, like VE this, VE that, area of environmental concern, AEC, those sorts of monikers have certain specific restrictions on what can be done close to the ocean. And it would be my client's job to satisfy, and if they can't, then they're not going to be able to build it, or build it in the way they want to, without complying with those next steps for permit approvals and issuance.
My question has more to do with, once the structure is built and patrons are coming and staying, so they're acquiring lodging, I wanted to ask about what the owner's intent was in terms of helping those patrons comply with the ordinances. Would you plant the backside of the dune, for instance? Now, maybe that's something you haven't gotten into and aren't aware of, but there are things you do to maintain the dune. And controlling, or at least attempting to control, or remind patrons that you don't walk over the dunes, rather there should be an access.
Like a fencing and signage to make sure that the patrons do not do that, yes. I'm going to speak for Mr. Gandhi, I'm going to, and you, I'll, you come up here, but for instance, like the plantings, you can't even plant bushes without getting KAMA approval, even if they're native to it, because of the sensitive nature of it. But to the extent, I'll let Mr. Gandhi talk about what I would call traffic diversion sorts of things to keep people off of the dunes and what have you.
Just want to explain to you what we have currently in our site. So we have the walkway properly guarded, you know, we, I think, have a signage, we'd say, stay off the dunes. And even when they check in, we tell them that to stay off the dunes. Maybe we can add, as you said, we can put the notes also on the back door of each room, telling that, you know, there is a fines and stay off that. And we would definitely want to protect it. This will protect the town and our investment both. So we understand that it is everybody's business, and we will make sure that that's not disturbing. If needed additional help to put extra, you know, vegetation there to protect it, I think it should be done.
Thank you for that commitment, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes. And Mr. Richardson, I'm sure he's the right person to ask concerning parking. So if I understand it correctly, there's 98 parking spots for 93 rooms. Are there plans for overflow parking? If you're doing a hosted event, a wedding, which are plans to account for that? And is each room limited to one vehicle?
Well, Mr. Murphy or Mr. Gandhi, I don't have the technical specification experience for that, to be able to answer that. Obviously, parking's going to meet the town's requirements for however many minimum required parking spaces are necessary, but...
So, no, we, we are not encouraging getting married at the motel. That was not, was the purpose when I brought this. When there is a marriage in the city or town, people want to stay there. There is no reason, I see, that people are going to host it at my location. I don't think it is, I don't have a conference room or any of such facility to do that. So if I'm not wrong, I don't want to enter this code, but I think we need one parking spot per room, is that correct? And, and obviously, two or three for the employees, I guess, but we have more than that.
I think what he's asking you, because we've already talked about the top deck, if there was some sort of an event, and the events bringing in people who aren't staying at the hotel, you're going to have potentially a maximization of the parking spaces. And I'm guessing that the way that you would propose handling that is to have trolley types of service. If you were having such an event, you would find an off-site space that people could park at to load up on a trolley to be brought to the hotel, so that you don't have excess parking overflowing on the streets. I think that's the safety concern that the council member is talking about.
As I said, I don't think we are targeting that, though. I mean, if you're asking me that question, what happens like that, bringing people from the town, I have, I don't think it is meant, this facility, this motel is not going to meant for that. But if that's what happens, you know, obviously, they need to be instructed where to park legally, you know, they have to pay.
You would remind the people that they cannot park unlawfully outside of the available parking spaces, so that if they were parking improperly, then I think it would fall upon the town's police department and staff to cite, give citations, as you would typically during the height of summer months anyway. But you would make sure that people understood that they cannot park illegally, on-site or off-site.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, just a quick follow-up question, if I could, with respect to Section 2.15, height limitation exceptions.
Correct.
I'm seeing here, it's a very broad catch-all, that says mechanical apparatus for commercial structure. And I attempted to find out what the definition of mechanical apparatus, and the, literally the only thing I found through Google searches is chillers, HVAC, air handlers. But you're saying, your interpretation, is it interpretation, or is that just an understanding amongst all planning departments?
No, that's, I don't, I didn't bring that up with me, but I did have some definitions of mechanical apparatus. Mechanical is something that has a means of movement, and apparatus is as well. So it's elevator, escalator, those are mechanical apparatuses, because they move things from one place to the other. It is a broad definition, and we, and we don't, we haven't narrowed down a single definition as to what mechanical apparatus is.
And has that been your implementation of mechanical apparatus for other hotels or commercial structures that have elevators, Mr. Edwards?
We have used it on the condominiums over there, South Winds, or not South Winds, whatever the 58th Street condos are, we've used the mechanical apparatus exceptions there. We've also used it on the town fire station down in the Old Jo Pine section.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Mr. Edwards, one last question, if I could, before you sat down, actually, you've already sat down. To address the rumor mill, Article Redden, State Port Pilot, where the previous owner of the hotel, after it burned down, has stated that he applied for a permit, and it was not granted to him, is that, you've been here for a long time, way longer than I.
I, I dealt with Walt when it burnt down, and at that time, there wasn't enough vegetation on the beach for him to put back what he wanted to. So it was a KAMA issue. As Mr. Richardson said, that area is called an area of environmental concern, so KAMA has a broad reach as to what development goes on there, what size development. And at that time, it wasn't that he submitted applications, he discussed it, and he couldn't get past the hurdle of KAMA.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I believe there was another gentleman that signed up. Sir?
Mr. Stewart?
Some will go ahead and lodge my objection to Mr. Stewart speaking, not only because of the fact that he's a, I've represented him before, obviously before counsel, but I don't believe Mr. Stewart possesses the requisite standing to speak before you tonight. He's not an, he's not an adjacent or nearby property owner that would be affected by this application. He's not a property owner of the area in question, and also because of the reasons I previously stated at the beginning of tonight with my objection to this hearing even happening tonight versus in March. And with that, I will try to move all my stuff.
Hey, Brady? I have a few handouts to provide you for...
Mr. Stewart, before we get there, let me just ask you a few questions. Do you contend that if this special use permit is granted, that you will suffer some sort of damage or injury that's distinct and different than the rest of the community?
I think there may be special damages if the, if the approval is granted and the, it's not supported by the right investigations that are necessary in order to support this application for permitting.
You contend you would incur that type of special damage?
I think the, the community could, right?
Okay, but...
I just...
Do you own property in the, in the general vicinity of this location?
No, I do not. As you well know, I'm the managing director of Boardwalk Place, which is about 3,200 feet from the property. I'm here tonight as a qualified expert by the council, back on February 13th of 2023, for landscape architecture, land planning, development, also a realtor and a contractor. So my concern was, and the reason why I'm here tonight is...
Mr. Reeves, I would object, he's not established standing by his own admission.
Oh, I'm going to get there. Give me a second. Mr. Stewart, or, excuse me, Madam Mayor and counsel, again, according to our code, if, as I understand, Mr. Stewart, he is not alleging that he himself is going to incur or suffer special damages that are distinct from the rest of the community. However, our code, if the board votes to allow a person who doesn't have standing, may hear from witnesses if they present competent material, substantial evidence that is not repetitive. So is there a motion to allow Mr. Stewart to speak?
May I add one more element?
One, one second.
To my standing.
If it's about special damages or anything like that, yes, sir.
Yeah, there, I reviewed, I became aware of this project in February, and I reviewed both meetings in February and March. And Boardwalk Place was referenced quite often, and there were some misunderstandings about the role or my role, and I wanted to clarify for the record of some of the comments that were mentioned during those hearings, you know, for the record, to clarify the record of who I am and the, the project that you graciously approved unanimously, and the effort that was put into that approval process. That was done, you know, with Matt Kirkland and staff to design it collectively to make sure that what you were approving could be built. And that's why I'm here tonight to question of, if your approval is granted, you know, can this development be built? And it was just echoed about the regulatory agencies of whether it's going to comply to those jurisdictional agencies that are overseeing this project moving forward.
Do you have anything else you want to add regarding any contention that you will suffer to special damages? That's kind of where we are right now.
I think it has to do with reputation, but that's what I'm concerned about.
Madam Mayor, again, I'll just, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Richardson, did you want to make any response to that with respect to the narrow issue of standing at this point?
Narrow issue of standing is he's not a property owner, and he's not showing any special damages related to this application, and this is not about his prior project that he's a managing director of. This is about this application and whether he has standing and he does not.
So you renewed your objection. Madam Mayor, pursuant to Section 4.11.1... Madam Mayor, pursuant to Section 4.11.1.1.2 of the Town Code, the board may allow a witness without standing to present competent material and substantial evidence. And the way it reads is, as allowed by the board, to me, that means we should probably take a vote on that. So is there a motion to allow Mr. Stewart to testify?
I would make a motion to allow Mr. Stewart to testify.
Your second?
I'll second that for purpose of discussion.
All in favor?
I'd like to interject briefly.
Yeah, let's discuss, yeah.
Yeah. Only if his testimony and evidence he presents is limited to, as he said, his reputation, as he called out in prior meetings, he feels like his reputation may be construed or misled. I don't want to see new evidence that suggests any expertise into how a regulatory agency may or may not approve this project. That's just an opinion at this point, but he can certainly present evidence to protect his reputation at this time.
But I think per Mr. Richardson's point, it has nothing to do with this application. It has to do with a prior development, which the irony is it was approved. So I'm not sure why we would allow the testimony unless it bears on the current issue before us. But I want to encourage counsel to discuss. So, there's a motion on the floor? Is there further discussion?
Any further discussion?
No, I agree with limiting discussion to the matter at hand rather than the previous matter of the Boardwalk Hotel. I'd be interested if you had feedback that you think would be beneficial or testimony.
I think, you know, what I want to do is render my professional opinions, I've been qualified earlier on, if you recall, you know, the previous application had a.
We need to get through the motion and vote first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm not trying to cut you off.
That's all right.
But if they ultimately, depending on how they vote, will dictate where we go from here.
So the motion is whether or not we allow Mr. Stewart to provide testimony. We have a motion and a second.
My stipulation is that it has to do with the current project only.
Correct.
So that's agreed upon. All in favor? Opposed? You vote.
Yeah.
Unanimous?
Mr. Reeds, for the, for the record, I mean, the motion was just to allow testimony. So I want clarification if that was amended to limit it to the.
Well, I, I'm going to, if needed, interject because the qualification is that the evidence has to be competent and material and substantial, and if it's irrelevant, then I will voice my humble opinion to Madam Chair and the council as we go along. And Mr. Richardson may have objections as well, so.
So Lisa, you're saying we should have amended the motion?
We can do that if you'd like.
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Reeds.
If you would like to make another motion, now that you've made a motion to allow him to testify, that the testimony will be limited to this project, that would be in order at this point.
I'll make that motion, that was my stipulation.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor? Unanimous?
All right, Mr. Stewart, the.
Your question.
As you just saw, the council has voted to allow you to testify despite the fact that you don't contend you have special damages. This is a legal word, admonish you to limit your testimony to matters pertaining to this particular SUP application, sir.
Correct.
Go ahead, sir.
Could I provide you with a handout?
Let Mr. Richardson see it first. The way that works, just so you'll know in general before you introduce something in the evidence, the other side gets to see it and lodge any objections before the jury or the judge gets it. So that's, that's why we did it with Grady, and that's why we're doing it now.
God bless you.
Excuse me.
Seems I have a heckler for things that's probably wrong stuff. Guess that's what's a felony is.
Do we need a break after this?
Yeah. I didn't pee an hour ago.
We'll take a break after this. We'll take a break after this.
I'm going to object to the entirety of this material. It shows various pictures of the property of my client with a bunch of hash marks on it to denote whatever Mr. Stewart's trying to denote. But he's not a surveyor, there's not professionally drawn lines on here, it can't possibly be competent evidence. You're welcome to look at it yourself, Mr. Reeds. It's got, I know he's not a surveyor, I can ask him that if you'd like, but drawing little hash marks and little renderings on there for, as though it's a survey, when it's not drawn to scale, it's not drawn professionally, by its very definition is incompetent evidence. And I can see that he's already looking to try and point to North Carolina Administrative Code provisions that pertain to KAMA. Again, that's not his, that's not his area of expertise because he's not the one that's going to be reviewing the applicant's future submissions. That's left to the sound discretion and authority of KAMA local permitting officials, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Division of Coastal Management, Coastal Resources Commission, and I could go on. And so I would ask that it be completely excluded as incompetent evidence, and it's likely also immaterial for purposes of whether or not the use meets your special use permit application requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I respond to that.
I have a few questions for you, sir. You can respond to that if you'd like, but I'd like to ask you a few questions.
I hold three licenses. One is a licensed landscape architect, and I'm qualified to do conceptual plans and draw up specific preliminary site plans. In fact, I, earlier today, I was at Pine Mill Shores at a planning board meeting where I received preliminary site plan approval for drawings that I expedited along with myself and my team for a 4.4 acre oceanfront piece of property interfacing with all the jurisdictional agencies that this project has to interface with. And drove four hours to get here in order, you know, to speak with you tonight.
Looking through this package, there does appear to be some hand-drawn boxes.
That's, that's my pen, and scaled properly in accordance to the aerial photograph. That's my profession for the past 45 years.
You didn't conduct any type of survey for these lots?
No, I extrapolated off of the property survey that was in the SUP package done by the applicant.
And you're not a registered surveyor, sir?
Excuse me?
You're not a surveyor, licensed surveyor?
No, I'm a landscape architect, qualified to draw preliminary site plans and storm order plans and grading plans.
As I recall from your hearing, you have some experience in development?
For 30 years, that's correct, in the Cape Fear region. The previous application, I was not only a project director, I was a designer, landscape architect. I designed a facility, did all the parking, created all the exhibits, assembled the team. I wear a lot of hats.
You would agree that the exclusive jurisdiction concerning areas of environmental concern and the portions of the administrative code pertaining to various coastal issues, particularly the ones you have in this packet, they fall within NCD-EQ, KAMA's jurisdiction?
Yes, I met with them concerning, while I was working on my project, that's correct.
That's hearsay. My question is just, okay.
Correct.
So they're beyond the purview of the Towns Code of ordinances with respect to.
Correct.
Okay. And are the, are the drawings, your handwritten squares, are they to depict something related to KAMA regulations?
It's something I do in my profession where I interface with all the agencies, and then before, as I've done before, before the council and previous application, I involve all the agencies to make sure that when I'm asking permission for an approval, that everyone has been, has touched, you know, the project in order to gain the faith that what I'm asking can be approved and built. Correct.
My question's a little more focused or narrower than that. Did you draw these lines on these various photographs you have in here for purposes of illustrating something related to KAMA regulations?
Correct. That's my role in profession is to interface with those and apply those rules in order to design a project to make sure it will meet all the requirements.
Madam Mayor, based on that question and answer, I would recommend that we sustain the objection, the, as to the document, and you've already agreed he can testify, by his own testimony, he's not a surveyor, these are handwritten. I don't want to put words in your mouth, it looks like you're drawing around lots or what appear to be lots or.
Oh, no, I was just outlining the estimated track boundary because this is a separate parcel. There's two parcels for the hotel, and that's a separate parcel, and that's judged differently through jurisdictional agencies.
And again, those agencies are beyond the scope of the Towns Code, correct?
Correct.
So in fairness, Madam Mayor, I recommend that we sustain Mr. Richardson's objection as to this packet and not receive it in the evidence. Bleeding over KAMA regs to Town regs, I don't think will help this board determine whether the criteria found in our Code of Ordnances have been met. And as Mr. Stewart himself acknowledges, that these type of AEC or Area of Environmental Concern issues fall within the exclusive purview and jurisdiction of NCD-EQ and, we call it KAMA, but KAMA is the actual act.
Right.
With the staff that administers KAMA. So my recommendation is to sustain the objection. With all due respect to you, sir, to sustain the objection and not receive this in evidence. And we can take a vote on that if you'd like, or you can rule on it as a chair.
Let's just move on.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, I appreciate your candor in answering those questions directly like that. Thank you, sir. All right, the board's allowed to, for you to testify concerning this particular SUP application, so you have the floor, sir.
All right, am I allowed to distribute the handout?
No, sir, that objection was sustained.
Objection sustained, okay.
And again, just so we're clear on the record, by your own admission, there were hand-drawn lines on there, and the purpose of it was for you to draw some correlation with respect to this property as it relates to areas that are normally, or not normally, exclusively dealt with by DEQ through the KAMA permitting process and things of that nature.
Correct.
That was your testimony, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why the objection was sustained, sir.
Whatever. Can I continue? So I'll describe it verbally. So a few clarifications. Grady Richardson is my attorney, personal and for all my business matters for the past 20 years. On the 23rd of February, we had a conversation about.
Objection, irrelevant.
Okay.
Objection.
I couldn't ask Mr. Richardson here to be my attorney because he's representing the applicant. So a year ago, a year and a half, half ago, when I presented the application, I was hoping it was going to be, raise the bar for applications moving forward, to make certain that projects in a special use permit, especially in an AEC zone or on the oceanfront, like I just got approved up in Pine Mill Shores, did the proper research in order to ask permission for an approval to move forward. So I am not against the project, I want to make it clear. I promised each one of you after that hearing, I thanked you for your incredible respect and cooperation during that process. We invested, I've invested a lot of time, the team invested a lot of time. We had a qualified appraiser, we had a qualified civil engineer, there was a qualified structural engineer.
This is exactly what counsel said not to talk about. I object to it. It needs to be about this project.
All right, let's talk about this project. I didn't see anywhere where there was competent testimony from a qualified appraiser, qualified civil engineer, qualified structural engineer regarding, say, the valuation, a geotech engineer in order to have the correct borings done to make sure that the structure could be supported on the property in that location. Didn't have, we had testimony from the architect, but don't have any testimony from an environmental consultant regarding all the issues that were just discussed. A soils analysis to make sure that the water table was at the right depth in order to accommodate this project with infiltration or stormwater underneath the parking lot. I believe there are going to be concerns for the setbacks from the established line of vegetation that was done in '23, because when it goes through the jurisdictional agencies, it's got to be within a 90-day qualification. There are rules such as KAMA 15A 3D, which stipulates anything over 20,000 square feet has to be set back 70 times the erosion rate of Oak Island, which is two feet, which is 140 feet, which right now, that line goes through the front of the building of where it's located, unless it's a grandfather status, and that has to be reviewed, you know, later on. There's a concern about 15A 3D, excuse me, 3J, about parking behind the established line of vegetation of twofold of the 60-foot setback or 130 feet. So the concerns in the site plan is that, I think there needs to be a reset button for the design, because as a designer, my opinion would be, the building should be, the longest dimension should be perpendicular to the ocean and not like a catcher's mitt. You know, the establishment of Harmony, you know, the Ocean Crest Hotel, because of my familiarity with Oak Island, is that, that was a Norman Rockwell painting. It was very embracing and a great marquee for what Oak Island's all about. Wood frame structure, great skin, great details. And now there's somewhat of a large concrete structure there, you know, in its place. So I don't believe, as a designer, the harmony issue has really been addressed. So I guess what I'm asking is that, with all the efforts, you know, moving forward with what I've accomplished in this town, and yes, the project is moving forward that I'm managing partner of, is that I think it needs to be revisited, the team with the regulatory, and just make sure they come back with a design that's going to fit the criteria of not only the town, but yes, it can be built, because you may end up proving something that's going to be, come back in three months or four months and saying, oh, wait a minute, we really can't do this, we have to revisit it because of the jurisdictional agencies are, you know, telling us to do this and that. That's, that's all I'm asking. I promised you with the investment I made and the trust you had in me moving the project forward, that, I'm not being paid for this, this is just my professional opinion. I believe the opportunity you provided me, I'm indebted to make sure that if there's other projects that I feel that maybe are, need some more attention before the approval is set, is that I would voice my opinion. And that's the only reason why I'm here tonight, as my civic duty, so to speak, to the town that granted me a terrific opportunity to make sure others follow the same pattern and endorsement for an approval. Any questions? That's probably about all I wanted to say.
Cross-examination from Mr. Richardson, and then, of course, the board has an opportunity to ask questions?
No, I'd just like to be heard on my closing summation.
All right, Mr. Stewart, I understand your testimony, you've got some concerns about outside regulatory agencies and what's, what they're going to allow and not allow?
Correct.
Okay.
Because before I, before my team or I designed something, go to an application process like this, I address all those. I address all those issues and interface with those agencies before I ask for permission for an approval to make sure I can build it. That's why all the exhibits that I've presented to the town earlier are part of the record that I have to build it exactly that way.
But at the beginning of our voir dire or our discussion, you acknowledged that those regulations are outside and distinct from the town's UDO.
And every town has a certain grandfather clause. It's so, which I'm not familiar with. I'm just rendering an opinion that these items probably should be addressed or ask, you know, the Town Services Committee that, you know, what are the rules in the inspections departments to make sure that, you know, what you're approving is not going to change any more than, I think the UDO says, no more than 9%, 10%. I've modified, you know, my plan to make sure that stays within that element. And the reason why we invested so much time upfront is that we didn't want to come back with a dramatic significant change.
But at this point, that's a speculation on your behalf, whether that would have to happen.
Professional speculation, correct.
Okay. Fine. I don't have any further questions of Mr. Stewart. Does the council have any questions?
Counsel have questions, Mr. Stewart.
I do, actually. Leaving aside informed speculation about what regulatory agencies are going to do, which I think we can all play that part or game, but what I heard at the beginning of your testimony is a note of concern. Correct me if I'm wrong. What I heard you saying is that there was inadequate engineering and environmental analysis of this project. Is that correct from your point of view?
I think it'd be worthwhile to ask Mr. Richardson and the client of what investigations they have done regarding environmentalists and any conversations with, you know, the regulatory DEQ or DCM. You know, I was there because I'm working on another project in Pine Knoll Shores with the exact type of project. Like, I'll give you an example, in Pine Knoll Shores, we had a new AE, a new first line of vegetation that gave us another 35 feet in order to push everything forward. And I said, no, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to use the established line that was done three years ago because it's not a matter of when, excuse me, if another hurricane is going to happen, like Hurricane Hazel on October 15th at a cat four with a full moon, that's going to wipe out that dune. And then, all of a sudden, the development that I got approved up in Pine Knoll Shores is going to be the front line and we have to reestablish that berm. I kicked it back because it's a matter of when that's going to happen. So, I'm just wondering if that kind of, not every developer will do that. Everybody will push the lines forward and get as much as they can. Just something to consider, that's all. Not saying it's a requirement.
So, let me just try to qualify your answer. Your answer is that you and your team would have done more extensive research, but that is not the same thing as saying...
You have on the record everything from...
If you would let...
Yeah, I would think, yes, we do more extensive.
Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry. If you'd let Mr. Bog finish his question.
I thought he did, I'm sorry.
I think he was close, but...
I thank you, counsel. So, it's one thing to say my firm, my group, would have done X, Y, and Z because we're extraordinary in our analyses. It's another to say what is presently before us was inadequately researched. So, which is it? That's the bottom-line question here. Are you saying that there are not enough environmental and engineering analyses, or are you saying you would have preferred they had done more?
I would have preferred they'd done more. I didn't see any evidence of testimony addressing the first line of vegetation, the AEC line, the rules that shape and form the project after this step. I think that would be something that should be considered.
Okay.
I'm saying it's not required, it should be considered.
It would be your preference, I think.
All right.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I really appreciate that.
Mr. Richardson, there was additional testimony after...
Stop, thank you.
Additional testimony after I asked if you wanted to cross. Do you want to cross on that additional testimony?
No.
All right, does the council have any other questions of anyone who's testified here tonight?
I have one question for Mr. Edwards. As this project goes forward with respect to CAMA, is this considered a CAMA major or a CAMA minor permit? And where will the approval level come from?
This is considered a CAMA minor permit. The only time a CAMA major will be triggered is if there's another state or federal permit that would be required. As to the structure size, they, and we've done this with other projects here on the island as well, is that you can build buildings at 5,000 square feet in increments and you still meet the setback. Although the project is pushing 20,000 square feet, it will be compliant with CAMA because of the separate foundations that each of these buildings will have. And as for the engineering and boring, all that is done during the engineering of the structure. So, all that will be addressed during the plan review for the structure.
Thank you.
Ah, he, thank him, sir. You answered my question as to whether you're satisfied with the engineering.
Anything, anyone else? You can move on.
Madam Mayor, and counsel sense, the applicant has the burden of proof. We'll allow Mr. Richardson to give a summation. Or if you want to call any rebuttal witnesses, as you know, you're entitled to do that.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Stewart. This is not my first rodeo on representing folks in quasi-judicial settings. I've been practicing for over 25 years and I've been recognized by my peers since 2013 as one of the best lawyers in America in civil litigation, land use, and zoning. I say all that because everything that Mr. Stewart just said is incompetent and irrelevant and immaterial evidence for your consideration tonight. Not the least of which also is the fact that he does not possess standing. What he's talking about is things or are things that come after the use is approved. Tonight, you have heard unequivocal testimony by Mr. Edwards, your town staff, Mr. Golden, your town staff, that my client has satisfied all of the town's required, requirements and expectations for issuance of a special use application that's been applied for. They also, hearing what council's concerns were previously, rendered an artistic drawing to show you visually 3D concepts from the ocean, from the street, the sides in support of this application. They have agreed to the conditions in building what you have seen. They have also told you that they will, because it's also in their best interest, right? If the preservation of the dunes is not done, that only has a potential detrimental impact on their investment in their property. He's told you that beyond the dollars and cents of it, and make no mistake, he wants to make money. And there's somewhat of a language barrier, I can tell you in talking with Mr. Gandhi, and I don't think he'll object to me revealing this. What he conveyed to me was, he's trying to build a structure, a hotel that's affordable for families of moderate means. Not every structure can be built in a manner which is a Four Seasons. Because when you build that Four Seasons, there's a certain population that's going to be able to afford a $700, $600, $800, $900 a night room. He's trying to build a structure that is nice, a significant upgrade of what was there before, and will be something that families can come and enjoy like they have been doing with the Ocean Crest before it unfortunately burned down. It is a marked improvement aesthetically to the surrounding areas. And again, I think it is very important and noteworthy that no one in the immediate surrounding areas has come before you to oppose this application whatsoever. And so, respectfully would request that town council, you know the standards. We've satisfied our prima facie standard because we've satisfied your zoning ordinance and your expectations according to staff. We are essentially rebuilding what had been there forever, but making it a much nicer facility. And we would request that you approve the special use application process and special use permit application of my client as modified and supplemented in Exhibits A through D with the illustrative evidence in E through G and H, whichever it was, of the photographs that showed what used to be there. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Richardson.
Thank you for your time. On behalf of Mr. Gandhi and Mr. Murphy, thank you. And I'm, I'll just...
Mr. Richardson, just so we're clear, A through...
A through D is the...
A through D, the applicant consents to, if there is a motion to approve, that that be approval, that that approval be conditioned on it meeting or exceeding as depicted in A through D.
Yes.
Ms. Stites, you've got that on the record that they can send? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Richardson. I believe that's all who signed up. Madam Mayor, if it'd be appropriate at this point to close the public hearing, although if you wanted to keep it open simply in case you wanted to ask staff or any of the witnesses anything during your deliberations, we could keep it open until you're finished with your deliberations and are ready to make a motion one way or the other, or we can go ahead and close it now and then reopen it if a question arises later.
Let's close it now, is there a...
I have a question, counsel. So, this for counsel? I'm sorry to drag you back there. So, in the discussion about the sun deck, I heard your client say he had no plans to develop it as a bar or to add additional structures. Is that something you're willing to accept as a condition? That it's simply for sunbathing?
Mr. Gandhi, are you willing to accept that condition presently? He's asking if you would limit the current use, if approved, to the top deck as a sunbathing deck? Are you...
Not an event?
Not an event, please?
Center, bar?
I think he's already said he was not looking to have a bar up there, but...
He did. I'm asking if he'll accept that as a formal condition. That was his statement, you're correct.
Yes, we would not, we would not be setting that.
So, no events and no bar service?
It would prohibit you from, it would prohibit you... I believe, and I'm going to ask Mr. Gandhi to confirm this, he's willing to agree to there be no sale of alcohol on that top deck and also that he's not going to use it as sort of a reception venue. Now, if someone, say a baseball team books four rooms or six rooms and they all go up there on a sun deck, I mean, we get into this, he's not looking to have that as a venue, but certainly groups of people are going to go up there. But he's not, but he's not providing sales of alcohol or anything like that.
Counsel, I'm happy to restrict it to sunbathing and observation for patrons of the hotel only. No food or beverage. I mean, it's a sun deck that we accidentally discovered tonight. So, but that's the purpose, right?
It's a, so they're saying, Mr. Gandhi, sunbathing and for guests of the hotel to use it, gather while they're there, but not any sort of a formal venue?
That's correct.
Okay, that's condition number three, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll just stay up here in case there's anything else.
Any other questions?
Mr. Richardson, with respect to the height of that elevator unit, that 55 feet and 4 inches, is there, maybe it's a question for the architect, is there any way to lower that from being such, you know, exceeding the 41-foot limit by so much?
And I'm going to make a presumption that you're going to say that most of that additional height is probably aesthetics, but I don't know.
No, the elevator code, building code requires an overrun space in the event that someone is on top of the cab, that they don't get crushed against the ceiling. There is a building code height, this 13 feet 1 inches from the floor itself that is required to add to that and then the structure. And the other portion is just to add the peak to the roof to kind of finish it so it's not just a square box. That determined the physical height of that space.
Okay, thank you.
Do we close the hearing?
Can now, yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second, but from Bill, all in favor to close the hearing? Is there further discussion or are we ready to entertain a motion to accept the SUP application?
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit for a hotel in the CR zoning district located at 1425 East Beach Drive, conditioned on the clarification remarks from council with Exhibits A through D and in addition to council member Box's comments related to the use of the sun deck.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, the use of the sun deck include the no sale of alcohol up there, which the applicant agreed to?
Yeah, just like he said.
All opposed. It's 3 to 2.
Madam clerk, just so it'll be easier on us later, the vote was to approve a majority of 3 to 2. And the conditions are that the construction of the hotel will comply, meet, and/or exceed the depictions in Exhibits A through D. That there will be no events on the rooftop sanctioned or organized by the hotel. The use of the rooftop will be exclusively for sunbathing-type activities or observation-type activities by hotel patrons. And there will be no sales of alcohol on the rooftop.
Thank you, counsel, for the approval.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. It took us a bit to get here, but I very much appreciate your patience. Thank you, Mr. Gandhi. Yes, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, come back at 8:50, and we'll hopefully move quickly through the remaining agenda. move quickly through the remaining agenda. We are back from the break. Counsel, just as a gentle reminder, the length of the rest of the meeting has a lot to do with how much y'all choose to talk. So we begin with the proclamation for the Arbor Day. Elise Snavely and Margaret Johnson, if you'd come up. So the Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, offer numerous environmental benefits, and the wooded nature of Oak Island helps set it apart from other beach towns in North Carolina. And whereas the town of Oak Island has been recognized as a tree city for the past 25 years, whereas the town of Oak Island recently planted 47 nine-foot live oak trees along West Oak Island Drive, bringing all of the benefits these trees provide to another section of town and ensuring the town of Oak Island will live on well into the future in more than name only. And whereas the town of Oak Island also recently completely overhauled the town's tree and vegetation ordinances, implementing new protections for trees and ensuring trees will be retained and planted even as new houses are built. Whereas the town will celebrate Arbor Day on Friday, April 26th. Informational tours about Oak Island trees and fauna will be held from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. at Register Park and the Nature Center led by members of the Environmental Advisory Committee. Now for, now therefore, I, the mayor of Oak Island, do proclaim April 26, 2024 is Arbor Day in the town of Oak Island and urge you all to support efforts to protect our trees and consider planting rain gardens using native trees and plants. Thank you very much.
Shh, please. Quickly, yeah, yes.
Madam Mayor and Town Counsel, Margaret Johnson, I'm Chair of the EAC. Thank you so much for again, supporting this this year. We are so grateful that the Rec Department worked with us to have Arbor Day on Arbor Day because Tree City does, the Tree City requirement does require that Arbor Day be planned for that day. So this is the last day of the week-long Earth Day celebration. It's going to be even more spectacular than before, and we'll at least do just a quick little review of what's going to happen. So please come and help support us in all this.
So we'll be at the Nature Center from 3:30 to 6:30 on Friday, the 26th. We're going to be doing craft, some face painting and a nature scavenger hunt, as well as having local and community groups presenting information about the environment.
Thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Paul Dubai, a presentation from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Counsel. In our Town Ordinance Section 22-42, the Recreation Advisory Board's powers and duties, we are to suggest policies and make recommendations concerning recreation programs, plans, and facilities to the Recreation Director, the Town Manager, and the Town Counsel. But in order to do this effectively, we need to be working off a recreation vision and mission for the town. The current five-year Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan that takes us through 2025 does have a vision statement. It reads as follows: To offer parks, recreation, and open space experiences and opportunities that exceed the recreation and leisure needs, interests, desires, and expectations of the citizens of the town of Oak Island by providing a system that is transparent, progressive, cooperative, and multi-dimensional. After we reviewed this, we felt that it currently does not encompass everything that we are looking to do. So we worked over two monthly meetings as well as a separate workshop, just for the purpose of devising a new vision and mission statement. This reads as follows: Residents of and visitors to Oak Island are experiencing improved all-around well-being by actively participating in a comprehensive recreational delivery system functioning optimally in the following seven key areas: physical, social, educational, environmental, communication, financial, and organizational. Once we developed a mission, a vision statement, we were able to develop a mission statement. This reads: To enhance the lives of all Oak Island residents and visitors by actively engaging them in a robust, comprehensive recreational delivery system that continuously promotes holistic well-being and enjoyment within the community. When the time comes, we will be looking to recommend that these be adopted into the next five-year master plan. I would like to now turn this over to Bill Millard, who'll take you through the process that we used to come up with this vision and mission statement. We call this recreation dreaming. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. As Paul said, we're at a time when we're going to be required to draft a new five-year plan for recreation at Oak Island, and we decided to get out ahead of the picture right now and the process rather than reacting to it when it came. So that if we use a consultant or whatever to help draft this, we believe it is in our best interest to provide the consultant or whatever the process is with significant guidelines rather than just accepting a template used in multiple locales. The place to start is envisioning what an ideal recreation system would look like. In doing this, a vision is a picture, not a task. In fact, in working with many organizations, companies, and businesses over my career in this area, I find that strategic process too often begins by outlining plans or actions rather than painting a picture of what it would look like if an organization were to succeed at what it does. And we wanted to avoid this pitfall, and so we began by engaging in what Paul said was a process we called recreation dreaming. We employed a five-tier approach to this dreaming. First, we painted a picture of ideally recreated individuals, followed by a picture of a community made up of such individuals, looking then to a picture of the optimum recreation system to produce this community, followed by the most appropriate operations to engender success in the system. Our final picture will be what does optimally functioning advisory board look like in this overall vision? So it's a pretty comprehensive approach, but it's vision-driven. So what does an individual participating in a life of ideal recreation look like? Well, we broke up into subgroups and we combined our own ideas with ideas we gathered from research and ended up with a rather comprehensive picture of such individuals. I'm certainly not going to take after, especially after a three-hour hearing, taking time to outline each one of these, but you can see that we have a lot of elements in there. We then use this to paint a picture of a vibrant community and well-studied environment made up of these individually recreated individuals. So we looked at as a community, what would it be? And once again, we came up in our subgroups with a lot of elements to this picture. Again, I'm not going to go through all of this, but just to let you know where we're headed and what we're trying to do to get out in front of the process of getting ready for our new strategic plan. We organized all of our elements into these broader categories, as you can see, and from this we synthesized a picture of residents and visitors experiencing improved all-around well-being. Did I hit something here that blacked that out? This thing always is. There we go, we're back on. Okay. Improved well-being by actively participating in a comprehensive delivery system functioning in the seven areas that Paul mentioned. And there they are, as you can see in the diagram. Physical, social, education, environment, communication, financial, and organization. So with this in mind, we took it into a mission statement. To enhance the lives of all Oak Island residents and visitors by actively engaging them in a robust, comprehensive recreational delivery system that continuously promotes holistic well-being and enjoyment within the community. That's where we're at right now. We're not done. We are going to go on. We want to take a look at what the system would look like for bringing apart that mission and what kind of operations are going to be needed. And then we can consider how the advisory board can help make this happen. So it's a process ongoing. It's not over. And we expect that in the process of developing the five-year plan, however that occurs, this process will be further refined. But we wanted to share with you as a Town Counsel how this process is unfolding and let you know that we are working hard to come up with a new look for five years ahead because what Oak Island is now is different than it was in the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you. I applaud your efforts.
Job well done. Bill, Paul?
Thank you. I look forward to the rest of the plan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Next is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am.
So please give us your name and your address. You have three minutes. Brevity is appreciated, particularly tonight.
Glenn Baker.
I'd like to ask, as one person is speaking, if the next person could be on deck?
Okay.
To try to.
Andy Spradley.
Andy, if you'd just stand behind.
As you all know, good evening, esteemed counsel and mayor. My name is Glenn Baker and I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street. I want to offer my thoughts on the agenda item concerning the proposal to reduce the size of mega houses as put forth by Counselor Chulo and others. Firstly, I want to extend my gratitude to Counselor Chulo and those counselors who stand with the residents of our town. In our community, there is a growing weariness among residents witnessing the gradual transformation of our once-small, family-friendly town. We see opportunities seeking to exploit our neighborhoods and homes for their financial gain, often at the expense of our community's character. It is important to acknowledge that zoning changes must adhere to a legal process which all of you are aware of. Many residents in our town are prepared to assist in the process to ensure that any changes align with our community's best interests. Once again, I extend my thanks to Counselor Chulo for championing this cause. Counselors and mayors, we seek and request your support in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On deck is.
Anne Shading.
Thank you, Lisa.
Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast 6th Street. Good evening, members of the council, Madam Mayor. I usually do three slides. I'm only doing two tonight. Okay, we are approaching the finish line for the annual Oak Island Beach Preservation Silent Auction Event. Tickets can still be obtained at the Grape and Ale, who have been exceedingly helpful in promoting our ticket sales. We cordially invite you to participate in this occasion, where you may bid on an array of splendid items generously donated by our supporters and mingle with fellow citizens and some council members who share our dedication to preserving the beach. So thank you. And second, an update on the shower tower. It appears it is going, we donated it to the town. We're planning to donate two, three more in the coming years. It will be installed at 30th Street West Access. We want to extend our gratefulness to the town, that the public works for the management of both the infrastructure and the installation of this thing. This marks the first of three of the towers that Oak Island Beach Preservation intends to donate to enhance the convenience for guests and citizens when they visit our beaches. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Shading at 2502 West Yacht Drive. Council members and Mayor Mayor, first I want to thank you for the hard work you're doing for our community. Since January, we've seen your efforts and we've seen you work closer together. We appreciate this and your continued focus on our community. I was very pleased, like Glenn, to see the agenda for today's meeting, especially that the council is putting so much focus on limiting the square footage of the mega homes. Limiting the homes to a more reasonable square footage makes sense for Oak Island. I've been in those homes. Those rooms with the attached closet, such as it is, are smaller than that new hotel's going to be. It's ludicrous. This was one of the top areas of concern, the community members' voice in their survey last year. That survey gave the Town Counsel direction and specifics on what our citizens are concerned about. The island doesn't need more buildings to host 20 to 30 people. The people of Oak Island are sick of it. We're a community, not a commodity. The community sees that continuing to allow these mega houses to be built by investors is not benefiting our town's residents or what is left of our small, small-town kind of family community. It's not even close. The previous Town Counsel failed two years ago to make changes. Now is your chance to work for the community in addressing one of their key concerns, the size of these homes. Thank you to the Town Council members that are pushing and supporting this effort. The community has told you what we want. The community is glad to see you working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council reports. John, we'll start with you.
For the interest of brevity, I want to thank the members, the council members of the search committee, the RFPs, our first-rate quality, and appreciate all of your efforts in getting that process launched. Transition is proceeding at pace. I did not attend the last meeting. Mr. Chulo and Mr. Martin did, and they perhaps can comment briefly about our technology review. Thank you.
I'll just be brief. I want to give a shout out to some of our citizens who have formed a volunteer group. They worked with Rick Patterson, they worked with the fire chief, and they are watering our newly planted trees on Sunday evenings about 6 o'clock if the trees didn't receive significant water in the last day or two. My shout out to the chief is for allowing them to fill up their water buckets at the firehouse. And so just a shout out to those folks. I'm sure that Rick Patterson would be happy to help any other groups who want to form and do the same thing. So thank you very much to our citizens for helping out.
Good things happen when the town works with the residents.
I'll also be short and sweet. Been to a lot of meetings, talked to a lot of people, been working. But the most important thing I want to tell you about is not this coming Saturday, but the next Saturday at 2:00 at Middleton Park, the undefeated Oak Island Fire Department, Oak Island Police Department softball team is going to take on the once-beaten by the Oak Island Police and Fire Department Coast Guard team. They're going to have food trucks, the whole town's going to be there, come out a week from Saturday to watch our police and firemen and great umpires. They've got the best umpires going for that, me and the guy down there with the white hair. Come watch the softball game, April 20th. That's it.
Bob?
Shout out to the Par Three Committee that we have, that I've been. Shout out to the Par Three Committee that we have, that I've been sitting in on meetings for the past six or seven months, and they're just doing a great job. Does everybody know that we do have a Par Three right up in South Harbor? It's the worst-kept secret, best-kept secret in town, but we've got played the rounds and revenue up about 40% this year over last year, and they're trending in the right direction. Very excited for things that they're talking about, food trucks, potential beer and wine sales, and they're getting really creative, and we're hoping to continue to raise the revenue on Par Three so we can decrease the town subsidy in years going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, just real quickly. So the Cape Fear RPO had their first meeting for this year on March 15th, and the most significant action item that that board took is they approved the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. If y'all remember, that plan was presented to this board, this board approved it, and so now it was adopted by the Cape Fear RPO Board, so.
Excellent.
Thank you for your efforts in that area.
Very good news, and thank you for serving on that committee. Just very quickly, I have three items. Mr. Kelly and I attended a meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Moffett and Nichol to discuss OKI's, Oak Island's, I'm reading, coastal storm risk management project. We do have an agreement, we have contracts with Moffett and Nichol, and we do have an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. In working in the beach and inlet management plan, we, much of the discussion talked about terminal groins, and there is another project going on in Holden with Army Corps of Engineers. So it's pretty much the same type of project. Holden is about a year ahead of us. The study that's currently being conducted is to determine what is best for the inlet in keeping it clear, as well as can we create a hardened structure that doesn't provide negative impact on other shorelines, be it our own or Holden's. So that's very exciting, I believe, and what you asked for. We're also working on the 25th anniversary with staff and the Parks and Recreation Board. Beach Day is celebrated on July 1st, as you know, but the reason we celebrate Beach Day is because it's our town's birthday, and this particular birthday is our 25th anniversary. So we have some special things that we're planning, including t-shirts, their music at the pier, as well as at Middleton Park, their special fireworks, et cetera. So it really will be a big day, and we're also trying to put together a float for the July 4th parade honoring our birthday. And thank you, John, for the nod for the search committee. We put out an RFP, as you know, those RFPs came back last Thursday. We distributed them on Friday, and they're currently being reviewed by all of council individually and with scoring sheets. So all of those come back on Thursday, and we'll create a master sheet and then decide where to go from there. That's all I have. Consent agenda. So there are three things on the consent agenda. The town minutes from January 24th and from February 13th. Approval of stormwater awards and consideration of a budget ordinance amendments to appropriate donations and sponsorship revenues for the fire department, to appropriate funds from wastewater fund balance for the purchase of property adjacent to the town's lift station at the corner of Middleton and Oak Island Drive. So do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. David, do you want to say a few words about the stormwater awards?
Stormwater awards? I can. It's something that the EAC and them has been working on along with Rick, friends of the Stormwater Recognition Program. They have selected a few of those for this time, as you can see in the handout, Hagen Sun Seafood Solar Brewing Company, and Little and John's Sweet Treat Ice Cream Poller. The town thanks these business owners for their commitment to our community and their leadership in stormwater management.
And then the budget ordinance for the purchase of the town of the property?
Lisa gets to do those when we started this new thing here.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa. The one, yes, for the purchase of the property is two lots down by Middleton Pump Station that the town can utilize for the sewer system. And actually, Mr. Kelly would answer those questions if we have any of those. And then we have two budget ordinance amendments. One of them is to accept donations and also proceeds from t-shirt sales for the fire department, and I think the chief wanted to mention how those funds are being utilized. And then also, yeah, those are the two budget ordinance amendments.
We'll talk about that when we get to our...
Okay, reports. Excellent. Thank you for those explanations. I approve that. I appreciate that. Committee appointments. Council, you've got your voting sheets in front of you. We have two applications for the Par Three Committee. There is one on expired term and one vacant term with Jim Bickerstaff and Thomas Nalt as applicants.
How do we distinguish between the two terms, Lisa?
Let's put a 1 next to the term ending in January 2027 and a 2 for the term ending in January 2026. Will that work?
Yeah.
I'll see how that works out.
And then on the same sheet, appointment to the Board of Adjustment, there's one term ending in March 2027, and there are four applications. Courtney, Galuso, Eddie Grooms, Nancy McMurray, and Reese Simmons. So if you'll vote and sign your...
So for the Board of Adjustment, we have three votes from Mayor Protembach and council members Kraft and Martin for Eddie Grooms, and the other two votes from council member Carter and council member Chulo went to Nancy McMurray. So that's an appointment for Mr. Grooms. On the Par Three Committee, we had three votes for Jim Bickerstaff from Mayor Protembach, council member Carter, and council member Martin to be in the January 2027 position, and then Mr. Nalt, Thomas Nalt, will be in the January 2026 position.
Excellent. Moving on to administrative reports.
Yes, ma'am. Chief Price, would you like to get us started?
Sure. So I've got some really good news, and then we'll talk about a little education real briefly. So as it was talked about in the consent agenda, we take donations when we do what we used to call Fire Camp, and so it's the camps that we do during the summer. We've expanded that this year to two groups of campers of two different ages. We take donations, and they get water bottles, they get backpacks, they get some things, and as people give their donations, they get to put their name on it. So that's part of the movement of the money is for that. We changed the name from Fire Camp to Public Safety Camp, so us and the police, water rescue, we're going to have a, it's just a big week, so we're really happy about that. On top of that, as far as donations and other things, some of the really good news is that, just imagine this, that's your death. You're sitting in your house, and you notice something out of the corner of your eye, and you turn, and your toaster's on fire. Well, you go and unplug it, and it goes out, you call the fire department, and we go there. And you're scared to death because you can't hear, and your smoke detectors are going off, but you're deaf, you can't hear them. We partnered with a group called Stop Loss out of Richmond, Virginia. Ironically, they do house inspections for Better Beach Rentals. And so Stop Loss came down, and we installed visually detectable smoke detectors in one of our residents' houses. So when they go off, lights flash all over the house. So if that incident happens again, she'll be able to see it. What's really touching about that is she texted one of the captains on shift. She said, "I just want you to know that ever since that happened for two months, I really haven't slept at night. Last night was the first night I've had a good night's sleep." She is so appreciative of that, and that's some of the things that our guys, that our employees, not mine, they're ours, this town's, that we do. So we partnered with Stop Loss, and they put those in. On top of that, Better Beach gave us a $2,000 donation to buy more smoke detectors. So we're going to partner with Stop Loss and get some more smoke detectors and provide them to people that need them in the town. There's a video right there, mic's pulled up, of us going and installing the smoke detectors with the Stop Loss and the Better Beach people. And I want to tell you that that is, that's what it's all about, right there, is protecting the citizens. And so that's the good news part. Now, let's talk a little bit about education. Mike, you want to cue that flag video when you get a chance? Beach flags have started flying. We started flying them April 1st. It was a yellow day, and we've had two red days right behind it, so the season started out a little bit rough. But we did an interview with one of the local news agencies, and people were staying out of the water. I think that our flag program is really working. We fly them at crossroads down by Doodles, we fly them at Station 2. We're starting to fly them here at Town Hall this year. We fly them at Station 1. We fly them on the back of each fire apparatus that runs up and down the road. It's flown at water rescue, and there's a couple other locations. We've even noticed some citizens on the beachfront flying flags, which is great. So where do you find out? You go to the town website. There's about four areas on the town website you can find out what the flag is flown for the day. One of our captains developed a program that actually reads the National Weather Service every 20 minutes, and we get an email at 7:45 in the morning to tell us what flag to fly for the day. And then it monitors it throughout the day, so if there's a flag change, we get an email we know to change the flags. And so we've got a pretty high-tech system going on with flags, and that's the education part, is to let everyone know what the flag condition is, be safe in the water. It's just like I said in the interview, we know people come down for vacation, they want to get in that water, but let's be safe and be educated about it. So that's it. Thank y'all.
Excellent. Excellent report.
You were on deck there.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I want to just briefly talk about what Councilman Kraft was talking about on April the 20th with the softball game with the police and the fire against the Coast Guard. So one of the little things that wasn't mentioned was that is a benefit softball game. We really hadn't advertised that, but we are raising money for a local organization that helps people, that helps people in our community. So the last person that we fundraised for was Mary Allen at Sea Biscuits. We were able to raise some money for her and some awareness, which turned out to be an excellent event. Now, the softball game that we had, the very first one, was an excellent softball game. I don't know if we'll be able to match that, match that again. I think we need maybe some different umpire behind the plate, maybe. Maybe we need to switch Mr. Kelly and Mr. Kraft around here moving forward.
You're out.
Yeah. I was out before I even walked up to the plate with Mr. Kraft behind the plate. So, but yeah, we were looking forward to that on April 20th. We hope that we have a lot of community support to come out. It will be a good time. We have food trucks, the Kona Ice truck is coming out, and hopefully we'll have good weather and good time, but it starts at 2:00 on April the 20th. So, all right, so Beach Services. Beach Services unit is getting ready to kick off. That is a division of the police department. We are starting our third season with Beach Services. We held the interviews last week. We had 20-some applicants, and we've narrowed those down. We will hire nine folks to patrol our beaches. They really did a good service and a good job for our town last year. We logged over 6,000 warning slash citations enforcement actions during the year 2020, and that's mid-May through Labor Day. So that unit is getting ready to get kicked off, and we're looking forward to that. We have our UTVs ready. We're getting ready to put these new employees through a day-long training, which addresses everything from scheduling to fishing regulations, to operating the UTV, to ordinance violations, and educating them so once they get on the beach and they start their patrols, you know, they'll be, they'll be very diverse in what we're looking for. So we are, there's three shifts, there's three members on the beach that start at 7:00 a.m. and ends at 5:00 p.m. So we'll have three folks out there seven days a week, each day. So we're looking forward to that and getting geared up for it. So there we go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, excuse me just...
Yes, and one of the beach safety flags that we run is the UTVs fly the color of the flag each day, and so that's a coordinated effort between the fire department, the police department, the town administration, to make sure that information is being put out there. Thank you.
If the 6,000 warnings and citations for last year...
Correct.
Yep. Would you say, what's the split, would you say, between warnings and citation, just a ballpark number? Or unless you happen to have the exact number in front of you?
I have the exact number. So 1,086 dune violations, which that is warning people to get off the dunes and/or a citation. Most of, and most of those were warnings. When you have a family set up on the edge of the dune, we would move them off. 522 dogs off the leash that we, most of those were warnings. Towards the end of the year, when it, when it come to dogs on a leash, we started having an issue with that early in the mornings, hence the 7:00 a.m. Beach Services member on the beach addressing, addressing that. We had 630 glass containers, over 1,000 issues with holes, and electric bikes and hoverboards was 54, and we moved two, over 2,000 people with the emergency accesses where they would, a family would set up in the emergency accesses, and we would move them, move them out to allow entry, and I think that's, I think that's close to our statistics during 2023. But, okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Got two more things, Madam Mayor. We have the Knight Street crossover project going to be starting next week. They'll start doing mobilization. If everything goes well and everything stays on course, we should be finishing that up the week of July 4th, so we hope to get that done on time as well. The other one tracked pretty much on schedule, so we're hoping this one goes the same. Wanted to give appreciation to staff and to W.K. Dixon. We were awarded $579,500 for dune infiltration system. It's basically phase two of the projects that we're doing down Ocean Drive down the Yopon section. So that was some good news for us, so we won't be able to be asking that this year into the budget, so that frees up some money for some other things that council was looking at. But we are putting money in there again for next year, for the engineer to apply for some other grants for phase three for the next year, '25, '26. So that was... So that was some good news and, and that's all I have for tonight, so we'll turn things back over to you.
Thank you very much.
Or the attorney, whichever.
Uh, yes. Ryan?
We, um, we have a closed session and a couple items all addressed in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no old business onto new business. Consideration of request for encroachment agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Kickin' this off.
Say a plane to kick this off and let them know exactly what it is.
I'm not, but can I please have this presentation?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I can have it. Have the presentation.
Okay.
I don't know who you want to hear.
Then we won't play that.
Hi, I'm Cliff Carruthers. Um, and I'm, let's see if this works here. There we go. Um, and I'm here to, um, to talk about an encroachment agreement for retaining wall to gain access, vehicular access to my property on 138 Northeast 11th Street. Um, I do thank you all for being here so late and it's my first time to be in front of the, the Town Council, so I wanted you all to know we really appreciate the service that you provide the community. So I wanted to talk to you quickly about why I purchased that property, why I need a, uh, an encroachment agreement for, uh, a retaining wall within the city right-of-way, and also why I believe that that's the best alternative to gain vehicular access to the property. Um, so, uh, my wife and I, we fell in love with Oak Island and, uh, we wanted to move here when we retired and so we did. Um, we bought this house on 137 Northeast 12th Street and it's in a, uh, a non-flood zone, it's on piers, these are very important things to me. Um, but we realized after watching my, my mother, elderly mother and father go up and down those steps, that when we got older, we would need to have a ground-level home. And so we looked for a property where we could build a, a ground-level home on a flat surface. Well, for 25 years before I came to Oak Island, my responsibility was going into, uh, major disaster areas and retrieving, um, patients from nursing homes and hospitals and bringing them out to safety. So in that 25-year period, you can imagine some of the devastation I've seen with hurricanes and that influenced me to want to have a very high elevation property with a lot of maritime forest trees around it to give me as, as best a chance to survive a hurricane as possible when I, when I built my home. I also have a, a large family, uh, four children, three of which live in the area and a lot of grandchildren. And whenever they come home to visit me, there's lots of cars in the driveway, so I wanted to have right-of-way parking, uh, as I look for a piece of property as well. So in 2022, we bought 138 Northeast 11th Street and it had lots of positives. Um, not only was it a high elevation, it's actually the highest elevation property on the entire island at 32 feet elevation. It matches that of, of what they call the big, the big hill out on, on, uh, on Beach Road. And the house there is one of the only five that survived the hurricane back in 1954. So I'm in good, uh, good company with that property. It has a lot of, uh, good flat ground, uh, to build a ground-level home and lots of maritime forest trees. There's, uh, 80 trees that I wish to retain on that property. Um, and with side street parking, it would provide places for my grandchildren to come as well. But there's a major negative, uh, with this piece of property, um, in that even though it's a nice flat surface to build a ground-level home, it's seven feet above the street level. Uh, that flat surface goes all the way out to the front of my property, but then it has a nice steep slope right down to the street. And so to access the property, I need to either dig a driveway through the berm in the city right-of-way or grade the entire front half of the property. And the problem with that is, is, um, I would have to take down half the trees in the front of the property. And also with this grade, um, I wouldn't be able to build this ground-level home on the property and it would negate the reasons for me purchasing the property to begin with. Um, so it, it's not a good option for me to grade the property, but I want to talk to you tonight about why it might not be, uh, the better option for this, for the town as well. This is a picture of that hill that's right in front of the property as it was in, in 2022 when I, when I bought the property. And you can see there's just no way to get a vehicle up through there. So my solution was, um, to take a single width driveway up through the city property, um, to gain access to the higher elevation. But that would require me to put retaining walls on both sides of the driveway, including the area in the, in the town right-of-way. Uh, the other, and that would require me to get it in encroachment agreement from Town Council. So the alternative solution that I talked about would be to take down the trees, uh, remove the, this historic berm, uh, on this property in front and, and the town property, uh, and to grade the, the property up to the, um, to about the middle of my property. But there's two reasons why it's maybe not the best option for the town. Um, and those two reasons are, is one, doing this alternative, um, of grading the property actually doesn't relieve me of having to have a retaining wall on the property. It just moves it from the driveway over to the left side, oh, excuse me, to the left side of the property. And the second issue with this grading alternative is that it's going to expose two utilities that run through the property, uh, causing a, an expensive, um, repair and causing an outage to the neighborhood, uh, during those repairs. So this is just a diagram of looking at, at my property with the two properties beside it. So on the right-hand side, you see 136, uh, Northeast 11th Street. That property owner decided to take down the trees in the front and to grade their property back gradually. But as a result, it required them to have a retaining wall between my property and theirs because of the difference in elevation. And that retaining wall did have to come down into the, into the city, uh, right-of-way. And on the left-hand side is 140 Northeast 11th Street. They also had a problem with their property. It's just a unique, that, you know, the highest piece of elevation on the island. They also needed to have a right-of-way, excuse me, a, a retaining wall through the, through the town right-of-way to gain access to put a driveway through to their property. So both of these properties on both sides of me needed, um, retaining walls within the town right-of-way in order to get to their property. And by the way, um, these are not unique to these two properties. The, the retaining wall that's within the town right-of-way on the, on the right side, there's about 40 or 50 of those types of retaining walls that are within city right-of-way throughout the island. And the one on the left-hand side, which is a retaining wall within the town right-of-way, uh, to get access for a driveway, there's also approximately that same amount of, of, um, retaining walls within the town right-of-way throughout the island as well. So these are not unique to these two properties, but they just happen to be on either side of my property. So there's a picture of 136 Northeast 11th Street, which is to the right of my property. And you see as they graded their property, it required them to put this retaining wall between my property and theirs that extends into the town right-of-way. Now if I were to grade my property similar to theirs, I would have the same problem with elevation between my property and the property to the left. And I would then need to put a retaining wall that extends into the town right-of-way between my property and the property to the left. And so as a, as a result, um, doing the alternative of grading my property, uh, it would not remove the need for a retaining wall within this town right-of-way and I would still need to come back to you for an encroachment agreement. And this is a picture of that, uh, property to the left of me. As you can see, they still have a berm issue there and they had to build that, um, retaining wall through the town right-of-way to gain access to get onto their property with a vehicle. Oh, um, uh, that rectangle there on the right is just showing where I would have to put the retaining wall between my property and theirs if I graded my property. So the second issue that doesn't make it a better option to do the, the grading rather than keep my retaining wall is that, um, for some reason, there were two utilities that chose to put junction boxes on the steep portion of the, of the town right-of-way in front of my property. So they have lines that run underneath that steep area with risers coming up with hundreds of wires into these two junction boxes. And so if someone were to try to grade that property, it would expose those two junction boxes and all those wires, creating an expensive, uh, repair for, for someone and also, um, an outage for those two, two, two utilities for all those surrounding homes in the area. So for those two reasons, the alternative of, of grading the property to gain access to the, uh, to my property is, is not as good an option as having a retaining wall. So this is a picture of, uh, how I intended the, the wall to look. Um, you see the retaining wall going up to the elevation with, uh, chip granite driveway for, for permeability. And this is the way it looks now. Um, I did extensive work on the retaining wall in the driveway, but I didn't want to leave you with the impression that I did this work without coming to the Town Council for, for approval first. Um, uh, and so I wanted to give you a brief history of what happened on the property. So back in July of '22, I came to the Realtor and we, we found this piece of property that really worked well for us and said I wanted to purchase it. But she told me that what I should do is go to the city and discuss my plans before purchasing the property, um, to make sure that it, it would meet the city requirements. So that's what I did. I, I did come to the city and talk with two different officials, um, who both said that it would be okay to use the property as I planned, but that I needed a driveway permit prior to starting construction. So with that assurance, I then went ahead and purchased the property and I came back and, and submitted for a driveway permit and I began construction on the driveway and retaining wall. Um, I worked on it for about six or seven months. Every day I would go down, um, with a hand shovel and wheelbarrow and lifting these blocks in place of 65-pound blocks and meticulously built this retaining wall. In May of '23, I did get a letter from the city that said I needed a halt construction, that I did not have all the permits that I needed and that, uh, there would be a fine going forward. So I immediately went down to the city and began a series of discussions, um, to determine what ultimately would be needed to, uh, continue construction. And, um, on December 23rd, I received another, another letter saying that the, um, undetermined fine was in abeyance until I came before the city council or the town council to, uh, to determine how to go forward. But I did need to have two more permits to continue the driveway permit, uh, within my property. And that I did need a, uh, uh, encroachment agreement from Town Council to keep the retaining wall inside this, the town right-of-way. And also they said that, um, that, uh, while I, like, there was the ability to have right-of-way parking, when I started the project, the, the right-of-way parking had changed in the process while I was doing the construction and by the time I came back to the town, uh, was no longer available for right-of-way parking. So one of the things I would like to perhaps get permission from the Town Council is to maybe waive those, um, fines in that, uh, there was nothing that I was doing that was trying to avoid, um, town regulations. I just didn't know them and, uh, worked diligently to, to get this, uh, resolved, um, up until this point. So after, um, that point, I did, um, continue to talk with, um, town officials to determine what their concerns were for the retaining wall and what I needed to do going forward for, in preparation for this meeting. Um, I did talk with Steve and he, uh, mentioned that, um, his big concern was that the retaining wall would make it difficult for the utilities to gain access to the utility lines, um, if, if in the event that there was a fault in, in, in a line and they needed to get to it. I explained to Steve that my wall is only two and a half feet high, it's simply placed block, um, it's not concreted together or any fashion like that, like many of the, uh, the walls are. You could simply move these blocks out of, out of place, six-rated these blocks quickly could be removed to get access to a, to a line, uh, in the event that you had a fault like this. Brody told me that, you know, I, there's another, um, house in the, in the area that was having utility, uh, encroachment air, issues and that I should talk to their, that property owner. I did, and then he directed me to the lawyer that was working on that and I spoke with that lawyer and he said, um, you know, he's working with all the utilities on this particular property issue and there's no issues with the utilities, uh, and that they shouldn't be an issue with mine as well if I wanted to, uh, approach that going forward. I then, um, continued on and I corresponded with BMC about the electric utilities. And they came out and inspected the property and said that, um, they could accept the wall as, as it was and that they could work with the city as well. So, um, uh, so I, I think I, I, I addressed those concerns hopefully well enough to, um, to move forward. But, um, in comparison of the two alternatives, um, the alternative that I have now with the, with the wall in place, there could be a, a remote possibility, uh, that a utility would need access to the lines. But with the alternative of grading the property, there's a hundred percent probability that the utilities would need to access the lines because there would be two outages that would have to be done because of the two junction boxes being exposed. So because of that, it seems to me that, that my alternative is a better alternative, uh, than, than the grading alternative. I also, uh, spoke with Rick Patterson again. Uh, Rick Patterson went out and inspected the property and he came back and said that, um, he had a solution for me that, that I'm proposing to, to the Town Council as well. He said that he inspected the property, that the retaining walls were very well-built, um, and that he would recommend keeping the retaining walls that were parallel to the street in place, um, that was in the best interest of the town to do so. But he also recommended removing the retaining wall portion that were coming out, the small portion that were coming out to the street because, uh, it might, uh, endanger some, uh, vehicles if they lost control around the property and were to hit those, um, portion of the retaining wall and to backfill that area with dirt and that he would reduce, that I should reduce the maximum driveway to the, to the 24 feet at the street. I agree with Rick Patterson's, um, solution because it's a, it's a good compromise for me. I can keep, um, all of the maritime trees on the property. I can keep the ground level, uh, where I can build a ground-level house at the top of the property. Um, and, uh, and all this work I did over that seven-month period on those retaining walls, it doesn't go to waste. So that's what I would propose to, uh, the Town Council is to, uh, follow Rick Patterson's solution and, um, to approve the possibility of me going forward and getting an encroachment agreement, uh, with the town.
So what are you asking of Council?
So my understanding is in order for me to keep the retaining wall and to finish the driveway, uh, that I've, as I proposed, um, that I would agree with, with Rick Patterson's solution to remove the small portions of the retaining wall that come out to the street and then, um, and to keep the remaining portion of the wall. Um, but in order to do that, I need for the Town Council to approve me entering into an encroachment agreement with the town of Oak Island. And so that was what, what's in, in order for you today would be to approve, uh, me going forward and entering into an encroachment agreement with the town based on removing those portions of the, of the, um, wall that are extending out to the street and backfilling those with dirt and minimizing my driveway or my maximum driveway width to 24 feet at the, at the street.
Ms. Dykes, does that encroachment agreement get written after this point or?
I mean, that would be Council's decision and direction. There's not one that's been provided to staff.
Okay, thank you. Council?
Was Brady prepared to address this at the beginning?
I didn't have any, anything prepared, any presentation, but I was open to any questions if you had any.
With, with the administration, with Rick Patterson's suggestion, is that viable from
With, with the administration, with Rick Patterson's suggestion, is that viable from your viewpoint?
With Rick not being here to represent himself, um, based on council's decision of what you've heard, um, I can't give any additional information without, you know, conferring with Rick.
Yeah, I talked with Rick about what he had, um, presented and, uh, Rick said he did talk to him about removing the wings on the ends and backfilling, reducing the driveway, uh, looking at the wall. Uh, Rick also knew that, um, a few months ago, we granted an easement to another piece of property and council had looked at the distance from the road right of ways to a certain wall in a previous encroachment. So that, that's what Rick was basing his observations on. Uh, I don't know if Steve's visited the property or anything like that, but, um, you could ask him whatever his opinion would be.
Mr. Edwards, are you familiar with this one?
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with it.
That it?
No, let me take it. I'm glad you're familiar with it. Now let me ask you a thing or two. Sounds like everybody's in a predicament. That poor gentleman was told that he'd probably be okay if he bought the property and he could do what he wanted to do and then year or two into it, he was told he couldn't do what he wanted to do.
Well, I'm not sure of the conversation he had with staff.
I know, I know, and I'm not taking everything as gospel. I'm just quoting what I was just told. Off the top of your head, do you have a solution that is a win-win?
Um, I mean, there are other properties out there that have retaining walls, as he said, but then there are other properties out there that have not cleared out the whole right of way. You know, they just done the encroachment area going up into the, the driveway or they conversed over the ground and, and it did, and was able to drive over the incline that was there. You know, to cut it down like he, that was his option to cut it down. And then he, now he's in a little bit of a predicament.
Is there any reason why what Mr. Patterson recommended would not work for the town?
I mean, anything will work that y'all approve. So, uh, you know, taking out the wing walls, I mean, taking, just allowing him to have the encroachment for the driveway purposes and restoring the two right of way sides, that would be reasonable. Um, there was May 18th was some of the pictures that we had and, and then May, and then he didn't stop, he carried on. Because we got photographs that June 14th of the wall completed, May 18th, they weren't completed unless he did it in the four days that he got his notice.
I had, I had, uh, I had a, one, one additional pallet of, of stones and the neighbors, you know, continued every, every day coming by, asking me when I was going to finish those stones. So I finished up the stones that I had, uh, but I didn't go any farther than that. As you, as you can see, I, most of the driveway is not completed at all.
Steve, if, I'll, maybe I'll try to rephrase council member Carter's question. So we have a process to permit retaining walls?
No, well, in the right of way?
Yeah.
Well, no, we don't permit retain walls in right of way.
Not in the right of way, but we do permit retaining walls in?
On private property. And then of course there's fill ordinances that have to be addressed or if it's being cut down, we have to address the, like his driveway, it wouldn't there, we'd address the stabilization of the embankment that was left.
Okay, so I think the question is if the applicant was applying for that retaining wall permit today as designed, would it be approved or would it be, it would not be approved? It would not be approved because it encroaches on the right of way. It's not just the little wings that?
Right.
That are the problem. It's how far down into the right of way that?
Well, it's the excavation of the right of way and, and then the construction of the retaining wall. It's a combination of things.
So then in that example, so if they, if the applicant came and said, I want a retaining wall permit and staff said, no, it's too far down into the right of way, then the applicant would apply for the encroachment agreement to continue building the retaining wall down into the right of way?
Correct.
Is that how I understand it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's just a sequence of permitting that did not take place. It's not that the structure isn't permissible, it's just the sequence of events to obtain the correct permits to design and install the retaining wall.
Right of way encroachment agreement would have, should be granted first and then, then we could design it based off of, well, the right of way encroachment agreement should detail what he's going to do. Like any driveway encroachment permit that you get with the state or the town usually show everything that you're going to do.
Okay. And retaining walls today that are encroaching in the right of way, we don't have a history of all of those encroachment agreements, do we?
Some of them date back to Long Beach days.
Right, okay.
I, I, I drove by all the, all retaining walls and just to try to get an understanding of them and it's, there's a pattern because we have, we have the, the island rising out of the ocean and then cresting and then coming back down into the intercoastal and all the properties are kind of perpendicular to that. And so what you have is, uh, you know, you have elevation differences between the different properties and where these elevation differences occur, you see these, these, uh, retaining walls in between properties. And then the other issue is like mine, mine's probably the most severe example of, of the city right of way or the town right of way having this very steep embankment. Um, and so whenever you have those very steep embankments, with mine being the, probably the worst example, you'll see these, um, these retaining walls within the town right of way. And, and that's what the pattern is and there's close to maybe 200, um, uh, retaining walls in the town right of way, but probably about 120 of them are for those two reasons, the elevation difference and these severe grades.
So is your intent, as I understand it, tonight you're asking for the encroachment agreement and then if that's approved, you would immediately come back to the town and apply for the retaining wall permit? Is that?
Well, I've, I've, I've applied for the retaining wall permit and the development permit within, uh, those are the two permits that, uh, the town, uh, stated that I needed for finishing the driveway retaining walls inside my property. And then my understanding is, um, that I need the encroachment agreement from town council to keep the retaining walls that I have in place now, um, with the exception of moving the, uh, the, the wings, uh, that, that approach the street. So if you were to be able to approve the encroachment agreement, then my understanding is the next step would be for the city to, um, put together an encroachment agreement or whatever those stipulations are that the city would require me to do as part of the encroachment agreement would be in that encroachment agreement. Is that your understanding?
If you look on page 74, it gave a dimension that he had from the, I'm assuming the edge of pavement, 12 foot, one inch.
And what council considered before was for the, uh, traffic to be able to have means of escape if something was coming down the road, fire truck or something like that and they had to get off the road for emergency vehicle traffic to pass. They believed that anything greater than 10 foot allowed for that. So that was one number that they had looked at earlier when they had granted one previously.
Is there any part of the finished wall that is above four feet?
It's all two and a half feet.
All two and a half?
Mm-hmm, two and a half feet above three.
Counsel?
Mr. Carruthers, thank you so much for putting together a very complete package. Your, uh, drawings and diagrams are very easy to understand. Clearly you've done a lot of research, um, into this. I apologize that you received erroneous information when you tried to do the right thing. I know you're here now trying to do the right thing to fix this. Uh, my comment and question, I guess to the manager would be is we have a list here of 155 addresses that have retaining walls that encroach into town property. Have we issued code violations to all 155 of these?
The council, whenever some of these were put in, they were allowed to be put in. Uh, back in Long Beach days, they were able to put in. If council said tonight that they want every wooden structure, hardened structure, rock, whatever taken out of the right of way, then we started this campaign probably four years ago, one time and we got started and then council, we reversed that and didn't do that anymore. If this council is so directed for us to go after all the addresses that he has provided and have them remove them, that has, then that's the process we will turn over to the attorney to start that process.
Because, you know, I see a citizen who's here trying to do the right thing once he got the correct information and, um, we're punishing him and threatening to find him, um, when we have all these other infractions before us.
My intent is, is not to point fingers at other folks and, you know, whatever, whatever the, the grandfathering and of all these things are, and maybe mine is one of the first that is dealing with this and I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, um, would like, you know, to be able to have a resolution that I can move forward and, and be able to use like, utilize my property the, the way I'd, um, hoped to do when I bought it.
And the fact that you, you have taken, so, A, thank you for taking the amount of work that, that you've put into this. You know, maybe it's, you know, we started a campaign, we just look at some of the most egregious examples, David, and we'll, we'll have future conversations about this. But I would like to make a motion that we approve your encroachment application.
Without belaboring this, I mean, we have sadly a very, very checkered history in right of way enforcement and we keep talking about it and I keep cautioning you that once you go down this road, you're going to open Pandora's box and here it is, you're staring right at it. On the other hand, this gentleman came in good faith. He's obviously done his research. So in the instant problem in front of us, what is from the administration's point of view, the sequence that would allow him to lawfully gain access to his property? Is it the encroachment agreement first and then a series of additional permits which the administration will work with the property owner to obtain?
I think he, he's already said he's got the other permits in hand.
Okay.
So the ba, the first thing would be for council, um, to consider the encroachment in front of you. Uh, we don't have a written encroachment, so then you would direct staff to work with council to write up the encroachment, um, if that's what you so choose. And then we would write in exactly in the encroachment what we are allowing and what, uh, items he needed to remove, which he's already discussed and Rick had already laid out as well.
Again, I mean, ordinarily I would, I have been, would, would be very concerned about creating a precedent, but when you have 150 historic violations, right, or more, uh, I don't think we're creating a precedent here. We need to solve this problem for this property owner. That's, that's the instant issue. And then at some point, if this body wants to really take on the right of way, God save you because it's, it's an enormous problem across many dimensions. But I don't think, to use my colleagues paraphrasing, we should punish this gentleman for the sins of the past. Let's find a way to solve this problem for him and we'll move forward. I'm sorry, you were going to make a motion, please do so.
No, I would make a motion that we move forward to have, instruct staff to assist within, um, encroachment agreement.
Second.
I would like to also add on there, uh, the poor man has a fine, uh, hanging over his head. We need to, uh?
If you, so if you agree to the encroachment, then we would reduce the fines back down. I mean, that would, that would be the normal policy for us to follow, so.
Before we, we vote, because everybody says something, I want to say that 999 times our town employees give the right information and take care of business the right way, but I don't bat 99%. So apparently one time somebody's, didn't give the right information. I don't want you to be punished for that.
So we have, go ahead.
Just a quick, do we need clarification that the applicant has verbally agreed to modify the work that was started based on staff's recommendation, i.e. Mr. Patterson, who's not here this evening? Or in good faith, we know staff will follow through with changing the design and the structure? Do we want to make that part of the motion or will be going forward in good faith?
I think we understand what you, what was discussed and what we need to write in and ask for it to be removed on his part. And then once that's agreed, it's signed by both parties, so he would be able to review the encroachment again as well. And if he saw something that we left out or needed to add, or if we saw something in the end that we needed to go back and modify, you'd still have the ability to do that.
David, just a point of clarification. I thought I heard you say if we approve this, you would take the fines back down. Does that mean he's still going to be fined or you're just going to dismiss the fines?
They would be dismissed.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Denominous. Thank you very much for your hard work.
I really appreciate, uh, your thoughts on this. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Just get back in touch with, um? Okay. Yeah, work with Mr. Edwards.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much and thank you for taking all the time this evening. Thanks.
You stayed here four hours. I'm glad you got a happy result.
It's very educational, thank you.
All right, last, uh, before the closed session is consideration of directing the planning board to provide a recommendation to limit house size on the island and in R7 on the mainland. Do you want to state your case?
Sure, happy to. Thank you, mayor. So this is a topic that has been, um, bandied about for a good number of years. So I'll lay it out, uh, I'll do some reading, but background and objective. So what we're attempting to do is set a precedent for how we interact, how town council interacts with boards and committees by giving clear goals and clear directives as opposed to something that's vague and then they come back and what they come back with is something very different from what we were seeking to achieve. So background and objective, large homes, large houses described in Oak Island UDO is dwelling, single-family large, have been and continue to be criticized by our residents as being too large and negatively impacting our Oak Island small friendly town feel, atmosphere, attractiveness, quality of life and property valuations. Such land uses have proven to be inconsistent with our Oak Island comprehensive land use plan. Councilman Carter and I have been working on this for several months. The goal is to seek a maximum square footage for new residential construction, which is in line with the comprehensive land use plan, the recent community survey and the requests from the citizens of our community. We would like to achieve a successful balance between the desires of the citizens of Oak Island and the builder and development community. Identify a solution which is, does not disenfranchise existing large homes and allows legally non-conforming existing homes to be rebuilt to their original permitted size in the event of a catastrophic loss. Directives, like to direct planning board to review and make recommendations for new home construction to be limited to 3,500 square feet, thereby removing the use of a special use permit for large homes. This should not be retroactive and is applicable only to new residential construction on the island proper and the R7 zoning district on the mainland. It does not apply to residential construction on the remainder of the mainland of Oak Island. Planning board to review and make recommendations to ensure existing homes in excess of 3,500 square feet will not be penalized under the non-conforming restrictions of the audience, of the ordinance. My motion to make, I'd like to make a motion that town council recommend approval to send to the planning board this single-family dwelling text amendment proposal, UDO Article 7 at all, limiting new residential construct, construction to 3,500 square feet and request planning board bring their recommendation to town council in a timely manner so that town council may vote on this text amendment at their June 18th, 2024 town council meeting.
Discussion.
Got to have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Now discussion.
Well, I am supportive of restricting the quote unquote mega houses. And just for the record, I supported Councilman Craft's proposition. And just for the record, I supported Councilman Kraft's proposition in the last council. But I have a procedural and tactical disagreement with my colleague, Mr. Chulo. We've, we've discussed this extensively before this evening. I believe this motion is better submitted in June, allowing planning board breathing spaces, they're doubled up on the UDO, council is involved in a search, council is involved in a variety of other projects, some of which haven't even started, the rec center, for example. June, giving the planning board the summer, having the benefit, hopefully, I believe, looking at the RFPs, of a new management team on the ground with a report, extensive legal review, is a better approach to this problem. So, I'm empathetic and supportive, but I don't like this particular plan, and if it were June, I would gladly support it.
I'd like to make a comment, as being a co-sponsor, if you will, with Mr. Chulo on this. I've heard, then through the rumor mill, that we didn't do our due diligence, that we didn't do our homework, that we flew off the handle with this one and tried to do something too quickly. Mr. Chulo and I spent a lot of time doing our due diligence. We met with planning board members, we talked with individuals who are knowledgeable about ordinances, we met with Mr. Kirkland, we met with town manager Kelly, to show them what we were asking the planning board to do. And as Mr. Chulo mentioned, we hope to start a new process, and I'm hoping that this is the first in that new process to better have our boards and committees aware of what they're being asked to do. Right now, those folks are sitting out there volunteering their time, and they have, in some cases, no idea what council's directive is. And I think that the way we laid this out is a good example that can be followed going forward on other projects and other things that we need other boards and committees to work on. So we did do our homework, we did spend time, we had a, we had a different format than what you see before you in the agenda packet. It was recommended to us by someone on this dais that we modify our presentation, and we did that. So I don't see any reason why it shouldn't go to the planning board and give them a chance to provide a recommendation.
I feel there's two issues being talked about here. One issue is, we're coupling this in. Advisory boards don't have direction. Parks and Rec doesn't know what to do. Environmental committee doesn't know what to do. Planning board doesn't know what to do. That's one issue. When you go and talk to these planning board members, talk to them about 4,000 square foot maximum. I've been fighting this fight for two years. For two years, I have said, no spatial use permits, stop the big houses, we can do this. Mr. Bach and I voted last time, we lost three to two. It made all the sense in the world. Don't punish people, let people exist, 4,000 square foot maximum, no more spatial use permits, no more mega houses, no more mini hotels. That's what we need. So, once you bring 4,000 square foot maximum, no spatial use permits, I'm there.
I'm disappointed in my colleague, that he says tonight 4,000 square feet, when in private conversations, folks, he said to me and to Mr. Chulo that he would start at 3,500 square feet. And we've agreed that there will need, probably need to be a negotiation in this thing, but to start at 4,000 square feet means that somebody's going to try to push it to 42 or 45. So we've got to start with something that's reasonable, and then work our way to get to where we need to get.
We can all be disappointed all day long. I'm disappointed. We talked about transparency, this and that. I haven't gone and tried to set up three or four planning board members, hey, I'm going to bring you 3,500 square feet, get your people in order, and then bring us back 3,500 square feet. That's no way to do stuff. Talk about it right now. 4,000 square feet, stop your spatial use permits, protect 10,000 citizens in Oak Island, don't posture to 25 people. I'm in agreement with Mr. Bach, we need to wait. And I want to stop these big houses quicker and faster than anybody. I've been trying to stop them for two and a half years.
Mr. Martin.
No discussion from me this evening.
So there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there any interest in modifying the motion?
Just some clarification. So consistency from Councilman Bach and Kraft, am I hearing you are willing to enter into a conversation, push it back to June, and start at 4,000? Is that, was that an accurate assessment?
I'm, I'm, not that word. Stop it at 4,000. This started, this isn't, I'll pay you $15,000 for a car, no, I'll take 18,000, I'll give you 15,500. Stop it at 4,000, period. Vote. Everybody can agree.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. But having that, taking the conversation up today, or pushing it back to June? Maybe I misheard you.
I, I think we have slightly different, I don't want to speak for Councilman Kraft. As you know, I've urged you to submit this in June, the planning board two months, to receive it in September, ideally, with a new management team, new legal review, and give it the, the attention and the study that it needs. That's my request. I'm not wedded to 4,000 square feet, I'm wedded to the best possible outcome that comes out of that process. So I don't speak for Mr. Kraft on that matter. I'm arguing for a delay, it's better planning, it's better tactically, to me, that works just fine, with your proposal as is. I would defer action on it until June. You've said you're not willing to defer, so sadly, you know, we have a difference among friends, put it that way.
When I think of, and I'm not sure if I use this term with you, but I think of, you know, kick the can, and, you know, that's what Congress does, right? That's how they run this country, right? Kick cans, continue to get kicked. We don't do that here. We should not do that here. The amount of work, when Councilman Carter says we've had multiple meetings, I will tell you, we've invested well over 100 man-hours in this process, spoken to almost every member of town council, we've met with Matt, spoken to Matt multiple times, meeting with the town manager, talking and meeting with planning board members, not to have a secret conversation, but ask them, have we missed anything? Does this process make sense to you? And universally, what we receive back is, from everybody that we spoke to, town staff to planning board, this process makes sense, we can carve out the legally non-conforming, so they're not subject to this. And it put, begins to put controls that we've heard, all of us sitting at the dais, when we campaigned and ran, how many hundreds, hundreds, tens of thousands of residents, during meet and greets, coffee meetings, candidate forums, said, please, make this a top priority. Previous plan, town council members, not town council, has not been able to get this through. And I would ask my fellow councilmen, let's have the courage to make a tough decision just to send it to the planning board, and then we're done until the planning board comes back. So it takes no more time from us, we'll continue working with, seeking a new town manager. It puts a little bit of onus or responsibility on the planning board, but guess what? They're working on the table of uses as we speak. And in our initial attempt at this process, we literally rewrote the table of uses for this. We then were asked to back off of that, but that's what they're working on as we speak, so the additional, the incremental work for the planning board is really not that significant, and that's what they've shared with us. So I'll stand down, but I just wanted to...
I'll say one more thing. A year and a half ago, we told the planning board, we wish we did not have to say yes to every one of these spatial use permits that come in that build mini hotels. Planning board, help us, give us some language. We go around town, people say, why did you all allow that? The language in the UDO says we have to. A year and a half ago, we said, planning board, help us, give us language. The planning board came back and said, no houses over 3,000 square feet, if you want something bigger than that, go to the golf course. We don't need to send stuff to the planning board. Yes, clean up our advisory boards, give people direction. Something as serious as this, five people have been elected and told, we trust you, figure this stuff out, get it done. I agree with Councilman Bach. Two or three months from now, let's get it done the right way.
Again, speaking only for myself, I support the direction that we're trying to go in. But procedurally, I prefer a different path to the same outcome. So if there's no give on this, then sadly, you know, it's not going to go forward with my support.
Understood. Let me, if I can follow a question, Councilman Bach. So you prefer a different path, so can you just expand upon that if you could?
Sure, I'll repeat what I said. I think a June submission gives the planning board more time to complete their current projects, to take this up, to give it extreme due diligence, to deliver something to the administration that they can analyze. The new administration incoming is seated, we have all kinds of legal things I would want council to review. That timing in September, which is a delay of two months, to me, makes a lot more sense given the work overload planning board has, we have, and it, to me, is a cleaner, I'll call it a path, or a different, a better way to process this, without disparaging any other work that you've done, it's nothing to do with that. It's a procedural tactical question. I'm willing to support this if you submit it in June. That's what I've said, I stand by that.
Okay.
And Bob, I'd like to think we're on the same page. We want to stop the big houses, we want to stop the mega houses, we want to stop the spatial use permits. Your difference, my difference is that 3,500 or 4,000, but we're on the same page. We got to get to the point now where four or five people can vote in agreement. We're not there right now.
It sounds like you have different starting points. You may, you have a finish, a cap, and they have a starting point, and somewhere in the middle is hopefully where you'll meet. So where I hear that we stand is, if we can modify the motion to task the planning board in June and have it back in an August timeframe, that you may have the support you're interested in.
I mean, please excuse my ignorance, so is that something we can even do? Is modify a motion that says, we're going to table this until June, but in June, we're going to bring it back up to instruct that planning board go through this?
Yes, it's called motional evidence in the rules of procedure, that can be done.
Okay.
Pass it, but defer action for 90 days. I picked September deliberately, because I'm reading the RFPs for the search, I'm sure you have as well. And 70 to 90 days out is the typical search, and we have some really high-powered firms. Assuming the new management team will be seated in September, and all of the reviews and all of the process, and all of the arguments will have been laid out, and then we'll be in a position to move, from my point of view.
Okay. No, I appreciate the conversation and clarification. So I would like to modify my motion, that we make a motion that town council, in the month of June, at the town council meeting, move forward with sending approval to the planning board to review this recommendation.
Ask a question, Mr. Eads.
Yes.
Do they have to do a motion to bring it back in June to take additional action? Or could they pass a motion tonight to send it to the planning board in whatever month they want it to go?
They could pass a motion tonight to, to send it in June, or whatever month.
So just another option to consider, rather than bringing it back and voting again, if you, if you want to vote tonight to send it to planning board in a specific month.
If you're willing to change the submission date to June, September, report to council and the new management team, you have my support, I've said that to you all along.
Okay.
You have my support if you strike the 3,500 square foot suggestion. If we're going to put it on them to come up with something, put it on them to come up with something, don't give them the, the number you want to reach, because that's not the number I want to reach.
I have a question for my colleague, Mr. Bach. If a new town manager is not seated in September, are you still going to be willing to let this go forward?
I'm willing to take it under advisement and see what they come up with, yes. If the new manager's not seated in September, I'll quote you, my colleague, I'll be bitterly disappointed.
What you might want to consider is nothing less than, when you send this, nothing less than 3,500 square feet. Because remember, when we did this before, about a year ago?
Came back with 3,000.
They came back with 3,000, and that was, you were never going to get anywhere with 3,000, it was a step too far.
I don't know how to, I'm trying to think how we, how we word that.
You also can withdraw your motion, which gives you the opportunity to edit your document and bring it back in June.
Well, I think we've got momentum, we've got agreement that this will be taken up in June, we'll move it to the planning board in June to bring it back for a September town council discussion.
I would urge, yes, that, that will work. I would urge you, as you have done, to continue the dialogue with your colleagues. You've got one member saying 4,000 is the breakage number, that's where the breakage is.
I don't want 4,001.
Okay, so, but as the sponsor of the motion, you'll have to deal with that, right?
I, I only have concerns with suggesting the motion tonight authorizes action already for June. I would much rather bring back the discussion in June, and we vote on it, whether it moves forward. I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight that we're already approving it to move forward in June. I don't like that.
Well, once again, we're making major decisions, and it's 10:30 at night, so I'm not opposed to, I will support your amended motion if you return it in June with the two stipulations I've asked for. I can't speak for anyone else.
Okay, amend the motion. I make a motion, town council recommend approval in June to send to the planning, send to the planning board in June, this single-family dwelling text amendment proposal.
Yes, you're going to submit it, resubmit it in June.
Correct.
Details still to be negotiated evidently.
And I'll second that motion.
Well, you can't. Terry seconded the original motion, it's her, up to her to make the decision on the amended motion.
Second the amended motion. All in favor?
Well, hang on, Mayor. So can you repeat the motion, just so we hear?
Um, yes, that it was a motion that town council recommend approval in June to send to the planning board in June, for the planning board to consider and bring a recommendation back. Did you say August or September?
I said September.
I was asking him.
I can live with September.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to clarify.
But we've got June in there twice, we need the first June, we don't need the first June.
Can clean it up.
Just take that out, please.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Four, nay, one.
Thank you.
We now will go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11, parentheses, A, parentheses, 3.
So moved.
All in favor?
June.
You know, we are out of the closed session, and no action was taken. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, Madam Mayor, we do need to add, one of the reasons for going into closed session was specific personnel, Miss Stikes. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Again, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I can't say my own motion.
All in favor?
I want to, though. Then there you go.
Thank you very much.